All right, just wanna repeat one more time that if you have not yet, sign the form here that's on the podium and if you are wanting to speak in our public comment session, please just put your name on a form, hand it to Ms. Messino here and that way we can call on you. Si están aquí para hablar en el tiempo público y si quieren hablar pues llenan la forma que está ahí pues enfrente. Entregárselo a la señora Messino y para que los podemos reconocer. So glad to have so many of you here. I apologize, we don't have seating for all of you. Disculpe que no tenemos cías para todos, but I would just encourage those that can to fill in the gaps so that those that are in the hallway can make it in and be able to hear what's going on. With that, I'm gonna call this to order. And we are going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and hence to our republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We listen to everybody because of the browser.
No, I think, well, actually, I don't know. So are we? Okay, are we recording?
You're now recording.
Okay, we are live, we are recording. Welcome, everyone. I am so glad that you are all here. We are going to take the role to begin.
Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia. Alderman Santiago.
Here.
Alderman Sheehan. Alderman Hallit.
Here.
Alderman Careto Munoz.
Here.
Alderman Demas.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek.
Here.
Alderman Stout.
Here.
Alderman Avinia Soto. Alderman Morano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Okay, we do have a quorum. And before we begin our time of public comment, I have a couple things that I'd like to mention. First of all, I had the chance to knock on all the doors of those who are facing possible annexation today and spoke with with some of the people. It's nine households. I was able to speak with four of the households and they were able to share with me how they felt. I know that a lot of people are here for, there's several different things that that might have brought you out tonight and it's great. I love it when we have public participation and and this is, this is what it's all about. But I'll just say that the four people that I spoke with today, basically I said, hey, I'm coming new into this thing. I'm the new mayor and I just want to know what you think. Do you want to be annexed or don't you want to be annexed? All four of them told me we do not want to be annexed and said that that was the feeling of their neighbors as well. So we are happy to hear from you all and I think it's a really good thing. Anybody who wants to speak about that, that you are here and can can do that. But I'm philosophically against annexing people forcibly unless there's a compelling public reason to do so. And that has been my position all along. And this has been something that started 20 years ago with a pre-annexation agreement. And I'm here at the tail end of it. And as a committee, we are going to make a decision tonight. I know some of you felt that I, as mayor, should have just shut it down. And if that was my role to do, that's what I would have done because I'll let you know I'm not for the annexation. But that's not how our laws work. This is the group that makes that decision. And so this is the right place for it to be discussed. And and we'll have that conversation and I trust we'll make the right decision. As far as the, I know another thing that a lot of people are here for is the Carol Stream Boundary Line Agreement. And I want to let you know, again, you're welcome to speak. We pulled it off of tonight's agenda because the map that was drawn up was incorrect. And we are, before we have the discussion, trying to amend the map so that it only affects the church that was requesting help and not other neighbors. So that's, that's, that might be something that some of you are here for as well. And I just want to give you a heads up that that's why, that's why that was pulled is because that was only supposed to be to help the church that asked to be pulled out. Okay?
For what?
And and we'll, we'll, we'll have that discussion more later. But let me just restate that in case I didn't say it clearly. The, the map was intended to only remove one property, a church, that had asked to be removed because it was not practical for us to get them water and sewer and it was more practical for Carol Stream to get them water and sewer. And so our, our desire was to try to help them out, not to try to change boundary lines other than that. My understanding is when we got the map that was prepared by the other municipality, it was not what had originally been intended and included other properties. So we went back to Carol Stream and asked them to change it. And we will make that map public once we get it back. All right, so just some opening comments. We would love to hear what you guys have to say. And I think I have got, you know, I know that some people are wanting to watch the Cubs tonight too. So I just thought I'd do everything that I could to get through things as quickly as I could. Sorry, I shouldn't talk partisan like that. We have some Sox fans in attendance. All right, we're gonna begin with Richard. And I apologize if I get your name right, but Mr. Richard Vignus.
Yeah, my name is Richard Fixness.
Fixness, thank you.
All right. I'm here tonight to read a letter of Sister Cities.
Great.
So Mayor Bowley and the city council members. West Chicago Sister Cities organization celebrated 25 years of partnership this year. We have enjoyed taking trips to top carpet bills in Germany and equal special hosting their visitors with West Chicago. Most of the guests' time is spent with planning and itinerarys of trips to museums, the city of Chicago, tours of businesses and other interest of fun places. There is a traditional walk to show off our town and the city services such as the library, the police, the fire department and the parks. We use these visits to share common interests, learn about each other's culture and create friendships. We have visited their different seats of government and have attended council meetings and visits with our governor in Springfield. These experiences are educational and have enriched all of our lives. We are fortunate to have gracious families welcome our friends into their homes, sharing breakfast and a few days of activities. While all the lodging is generously provided by, at no cost, the remainder of the expenses are funded by our small not-for-profit. We occasionally obtain sponsorships from local businesses and/or community members. However, we increasingly find our budget challenge. Sister Cities is asking West Chicago City to help support our 2026 hosting of the German friends. We are very early in the stage of planning, but tentatively scheduled the visit for mid-June for up to 20 guests. The details of anticipated costs will be provided as they become available. Your assistance would ensure that we can provide a variety of experiences and make this exchange special. We are requesting a contribution of $5,000 which will be applied to the transportation costs, loop tickets and/or meal or two. And any kind of substitute would be appreciated. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of our request, the members of West Chicago Sister Cities.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, can we get a microphone for you there, please? Do you have an extra one up here that they can?
We don't have any mobile microphones.
Can they maybe sit in one of the chairs so, because we can't hear anything that's being said.
They can have them come to the end right there. And I think that's a great suggestion. So maybe can we maybe put a chair there or something so that people can speak into the mic, but or move, yeah, just move to the table and people stand by it.
Thank you.
How's that sound? Kind of, yes, no?
Can you hear, can you hear Alderman Morano in the back when he's speaking into the microphone?
Can everyone hear me?
What number is the mic over there?
This one says.
Check.
Thirteen. Twelve, thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yeah, are you comfortable with?
Nope. No, there's not enough information, please, now.
Stand by while we deal with our technical difficulties. Okay, I'm gonna do a little adjustment here. Is that better?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there we go.
All right. It takes a village. I bet that never happened before. Thank you. All right. I can hear myself better now too. So, and I forgot to say, three minutes is, is what we give each person to speak. And thank you for the message on the Sister Cities. I just joined recently myself and I think that's a really important thing that, that we have going with our sister, with our sister city in Germany. We have Mr. Phil Algenon. Did I get that right? Close enough? All right.
Hi, Phil Algenon. I just wanted to talk real briefly, something that's probably being overshadowed by other things, but possibility of a tattoo parlor being opened in West Chicago. I just wanted to say, I know the gentleman, the artist, owner, whatever, proprietor, fantastic, longtime West Chicago person, does wonderful arts. I've been to his shop in Winfield, pristine, beautiful outside, ambient, upstanding all around. And I'm very much a favor of supporting him in that endeavor.
All right, thank you so much. And I, I am looking forward to, my understanding is that we don't have an application yet, but it is something that we have been talking about. With the city is just updating some of our codes, modernizing some of our codes to, to, to reflect who we are as a community and looking forward to that, to that discussion. Next, we have.
Excuse me, can I add to his comment?
Yeah, what is your name?
My name's Denise Kibble.
Are you on here? I'll just pull your.
No, I'm the property manager for Pretty Trail Shops.
Denise, I'm sorry. So they just, for the sake of how public comment works, like let's stop. So if you could fill out the form. It's right under you there.
It's gonna be right under you.
Oh, I have.
Hand it to us. All we need is your name.
I don't, we don't, I don't want anybody to feel like they're getting short-stopped or.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll put, we'll put you in the queue. We'll come back to it. Angel or Angel. Angel from, yes, there you are. And by the way, if anyone needs translation, we can provide that. Si alguien necesita traducción, podemos proveerlos.
I'll speak Spanish.
Okay, would you like, quieres que le traduzcamos? Tenemos alguien que puede, yo creo.
Puede ser bueno, sino alguien de las compañeras también puede.
Tienes alguien que quieres? Muy bien, gracias.
Muchas buenas noches, muchas gracias por venirnos a estar acá.
Buenas noches.
Thank you for being here, everyone. For having them.
Mi nombre es Anthony Cruz. Soy parte del staff de Casa DuPage Worker Center, working with them.
He's a part of the Casa DuPage here.
Como la mayoría sabe, tuvimos una marcha pacífica el pasado sábado.
As you guys know, there, as some of you may or may not know, there was a march here on Saturday for the civilians.
It's for March.
It's for March.
Exactamente, fue una marcha pacífica como todas las marchas que hemos hecho en el centro de las Casas DuPage y tuvimos mucho éxito.
And it was one of many marches that Casa DuPage holds and there was a lot of support within the group.
Quiero mencionar que nuestra comunidad latina en West Chicago tiene el derecho a vivir sin miedo.
I'd like to say that everybody here in West Chicago has the right to live here in safety.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Lo que hemos estado viviendo y viendo desde el comienzo de esta administración.
Well, we have seen and lived through, through this administration.
Han sido, han sido ataques tras ataques a nuestra gente latina.
Has been attacks on, attacks on.
Quienes, quienes, en su gran mayoría somos trabajadores desde limpieza hasta construcción, por mencionar algunos.
In the grand majority of construction workers and service workers of hospitality.
Y quienes, la gran mayoría estamos acatando las leyes en este país.
And the grand majority is.
Following the laws.
Following the laws of the state.
Ahora bien, sabemos que, sabemos que dos terceras partes son, por lo menos el 80% de arrestos ilegales por parte de agentes federales de ICE.
We know that about 2/3 to 80% of the RWEs have been delinquent.
Han sido, han sido personas afectadas que no tienen alguna antecedente criminal.
They have the same people that have no criminal records.
So cuál es la conclusión que tenemos hoy en nuestra comunidad?
I'd like to make a conclusion today.
Que tan solo por el color de nuestra piel estamos siendo fervilados.
We are being propelled.
Gracial propelled by our color. Estamos siendo atacados, levantados, secuestrados y perseguidos.
Have been attacked, even now chased.
Por tanto, acciones pacíficas como la del sábado 4 de octubre que llevamos a cabo.
That's why peaceful action, like peaceful march have been this past Saturday.
Vamos a seguir llevando a cabo, vamos a seguir llevando a cabo aquí en West Chicago.
We will continue doing it in West Chicago.
Y en todas las comunidades en donde nuestra gente latina sigue siendo afectada.
And now the communities where our Latino community has been affected.
Vamos a seguir luchando.
We will continue.
No nos, no nos vamos a registrar y tampoco nos vamos a ir. No nos vamos a registrar como lo llevó a sugerir en algún momento la administración federal de Donald Trump.
Presidente Trump asked, we're not going to register us for being undocumented immigrants in the states and we also know.
Porque esta tierra también es nuestra tierra.
Because this land is also ours.
Y vamos a seguir luchando y vamos a resistir y vamos a seguir marchando pacíficamente.
We will continue fighting and persist in peaceful.
Vamos a seguir defendiendo a nuestra gente latina.
We will continue standing and standing up for Latino people.
A los latinos hoy en West Chicago somos, tengo entendido, por lo menos el 55% de la población.
As I understand, in today's, they are, in West Chicago, there's about 55% of Latino population.
Sí, bueno, nos vamos a mantener unidos.
We will continue to be together.
No nos vamos a, sabemos que nos están tratando injustamente.
We know we are being treated unfairly.
No nos vamos a intimidar. No nos vamos a intimidar.
We will not be intimidated.
Y pensamos que cuando la manera de cómo está actuando este presidente.
We think that the way this president is acting.
Está actuando como si fuera un tirano.
Are you acting like a tyrant?
Sí, vamos a resistir y sabemos que debemos de seguir luchando.
And we know we want to keep fighting.
Uh, nos vamos a mantener unidos.
Keep together.
Sabemos que vamos a ganar esta lucha.
And we know we are going through reasons, but. Too bad.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask that the, the, the community let me keep the time and I am not counting time for translation. Okay? Um, so, uh, we have next Griselda.
Hi, everyone. I come to members.
Hello.
Hello, fellow legal residents, fellow taxpayers. I'm going to try my best to keep it under three minutes. Um, I have a little draft up on my notes. All right, so it says, let me start off by saying that nobody is an immigrant on stolen land. God is good, God is love, God is with us. God's love does not discriminate. Immigrants are not alone. Arriba la resistencia, arriba México, arriba todas las comunidades latinas. Hate can blind you from the truth. So allow me to share a few facts that do not discriminate. We are all victims of a corrupt system. America is just a fancy third world country. America is over thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven trillion dollars in debt. Yeah, this is why the Latino community is under attack because we do hold economic power. The federal ICE agents that are terrorizing our communities are public servers. These federal agents have lost to follow and they have been breaking them over and over. I believe it's time to sue them. They work for the people. The taxpayers fund a government operation. Undocumented workers are taxpayers. Undocumented workers contribute ninety-seven billion dollars a year in taxes. Undocumented workers fund federal ICE agents. The most common misconception is that immigrants drain the taxpayers' pockets. But white Americans are the biggest welfare recipients. Again, I will say it again. Undocumented workers contribute ninety-seven billion dollars a year. This country does not provide free healthcare. Also, in November of two thousand twenty-four, the Pentagon failed to pass its annual audit, meaning that it wasn't able to fully account for how its eight hundred and twenty-four billion dollar budget was used. Seven, this was the seventh failed audit in a row since the Department of Defense became required to undergo yearly audits in two thousand eighteen. As a proud Mexican-American, I'm using my voice to remind immigrants that they are not alone. One single day without undocumented workers will make the economy crumble. So that's why I'm also presenting the following petition. I don't, you want me to read it or?
Bring it up to me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Rough traffic, we can work on it. Um, I also want to say that I, these agents are not coming after criminals, not just our criminals, they're coming after hardworking families. Um, they are not following the law. The masks, the terrorizing, the false allegations, the lying, the threatening, the hazardous. What's going on right now in all the Latino communities is gonna affect everybody, one way or another.
Thank you, Griselda. And um, I will make this available to all the council members afterwards. And uh, we'll also make sure that this goes into our minutes um, for this meeting, so it will be publicly accessible as well. Okay? All right. Thank you so much. Next we have Denise or, yeah, Denise Kubel? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah.
Welcome.
I am here to speak on behalf of Rustic Roots. They're wanting to put in a tattoo parlor here in West Chicago. I'm the property manager at Prairie Trail Shopping Center
Yeah.
in Winfield. I'm also on the board of the Chamber of Commerce there. He's, he was a tenant for two years. He just rent on time. Uh, he held two different um, events there which brought in uh, people to our shopping center. So we are, we are always trying to think of things to bring more people to that shopping center so that it helps our tenants. Uh, we have a farmer's market, a car show. He had two events. He got permission from me to hold them. He's, he's followed the rules. He just rent on time. He had a health scare there for a while, so he gave notice, which was, I don't know how that happened, but it came right in the guidelines of his lease. He gave a hundred and twenty days notice. He got his full deposit back. He and his partner Kyle, um, they did odd jobs. If I needed something done, something that Beth and I couldn't do, I could call them. They paint, they did, uh, grates, they did a lot of different things. Uh, they, we had a fire there. They did fire watch on me, so we can get the system fixed. So they were there and they helped a lot of the other tenants that were in there and did work for them. So, um, I was just here to tell you that I've had experience with them. Excellent tenants. Um, so I don't see where they, there would be any issues.
Thank you so much. And is it, just to clarify, the, the name of the business is Rustic?
Rustic? This is the other man.
Rustic Roots, is that?
Rustic Roots, uh, native too.
Okay, great. So I haven't seen anything come across my desk yet. So let me know if there's anything that you're asking us to look at specifically, but looking forward to having those conversations. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have, uh, Bob Davis.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor. It was nice for you to drop by the house today and have a conversation about the annexation. And I expressed at that time that myself and a number of our neighbors are absolutely against annexing to West Chicago as that we don't see any benefit that this West Chicago can provide us that Winfield Township and, and DuPage County don't provide us now. And we're, we're very content for where we are. Uh, we had a pre-annexation agreement that we did in two thousand and five and that was basically a defensive move to keep Winfield from changing our uh, estate residential to commercial, which they wanted so they could get Roosevelt Road retail tax. And we were able to stop that and we've been grateful to West Chicago for going with us on that. But the annexation that West Chicago wants to do right now, uh, serves really no purpose. Thank you.
Bob, may I ask you?
Yeah, I must, I must have some followers.
I think everybody heard you're gonna be here. That's why the room is packed. So, uh, I, one clarification while we have you here. I'm just wondering if we didn't annex you, does that open the door for Winfield to swoop in and annex you?
I, I don't think so. Um, I can't categorically say that they won't do that. But if we got the notion that they might do it, we may again coalesce with our neighbors and what's legally necessary to protect ourselves.
Yeah.
We're just trying to stay as a state residential, rural people enjoying uh, the Blackwell Forest Reserve, the woods around us. And we're not looking to have, you know, handshaped neighbors out the bathroom window. And that's why we walk things just like that. And, you know, I, I used to live in West Chicago before I moved where I am now and had some great neighbors, but I wanted more area. I wanted more freedom. I wanted to cut more grass.
All right. Thank you so much. That brings us to Victor Perez.
Excuse me, excuse me. Let's see. Hi, good evening, everybody.
Hello, Victor.
Hey, um, so I'm here with Rustic Roots.
Awesome.
I think we'd be a positive, uh, business and it will benefit West Chicago. As part of business owner, I can tell you, we're all fathers and we look to provide a positive encouragement to future business owners through events. We would show different sides of the tattoo world. Some of the tattoos explain our stories of our lives and, uh, express our feelings. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks. Great.
Matt Waldos. Officially this time.
Hi, I'm Matt Waldos. So my goal here is to lift the ordinance to change the zoning downtown. So we've had, uh, get the tattoo shop back in town. Um, about twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty years ago, there was a tattoo shop right there on the corner of the Pink Building there. Um, I don't know what the reason was exactly why they lit, why they put something in place that there can't be something in town anymore that that requires a medical staff to be on, on personnel at all time. But, uh, I've had seven shops successfully, you know, owned where I made them into turnkey businesses that sold them off into to one of my other artists and stuff like that. And, uh, they've all been great businesses. We run a clean, sterile, respectable business and, um, just looking to do the same thing in town here. My grandfather Joe Schneider's, um, done a lot of work here for seventy years in the town. So, um, you know, I just kind of wanna follow in his footsteps as far as, you know, keeping that gear for me and my kids and stuff like that. So.
Thank you. Uh, follow up, uh, and I was having a quick little aside just to make sure I was on the Yeah. correct understanding, but, uh, as I understand it, we just need an official request.
Yeah.
Um, you can speak with Ms. Messino afterwards or contact her later.
Yeah.
If you can get it in by Wednesday, we could get it on the next, uh, development meeting.
Okay.
A development committee meeting.
Excellent. Yeah, cause right now what we have is that we have the, uh, the art cultural art gallery in the front. So it's, you know, it kind of depicts my Native American side in the front as well as all the different, um, ethnic, ethnicities and stuff in West Chicago. It's kind of, you know, just cultural pictures, things like that, you know, a bunch of different artwork and things like that. So very cool stuff. It is, it's a, it's a nice place. So.
Okay.
Think you guys would all really like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Free tattoos for all council members, just kidding.
Yeah.
That was a joke. Yeah. And the city attorney. Okay, Amber Williams.
Hello, okay, so I'm here to talk about the annexation. Apparently I'm one of these nine houses. I will live there right now to my door. Uh, but Bob is my neighbor. And, um, when my husband and I moved in, we had actually no idea that this was in place and that could have been our ignorance, it could have been our lawyer or a real estate agent that, that didn't disclose that, but that wasn't disclosed to us. And I would say that's probably the case for other neighbors that have moved in. So the I don't actually can't speak to everyone, but I know that at least four of the seven that are in my cul-de-sac on my door um, are new within the past twenty years and weren't really aware of this annexation. So you know, we're learning about it on Friday when the letter was taped to our door. It's like, oh, this is, um, you know, yeah, we'd like to have more time, more information. Um, ultimately, we would like not to be annexed. Um, we really appreciate the services that Winfield Township provides for us and, um, we have, we see no benefit in being annexed. Um, one thing is people are talking about maybe putting us into the city water. Um, we moved in four years ago and we put thousands of dollars into our water softener and really enjoy our water now, but don't wanna, you know, just grab that system and then have to tie into city water and also pay for that. Um, so that is a big deal for us. And then I don't, I don't know all my neighbors, but some of the people, if I'm understanding all the documents that I've received correctly, um, some of the people already have Winfield addresses that this would affect. Is that correct?
So postal addresses would be different from being incorporated into the city. So.
Cause I have a West Chicago address even on Winfield Township, but some of these are actually listed as a Winfield address. Um, and that would change if we were annexed to a West Chicago address.
Uh, I'm being told by, uh, uh, Ms. Messino here that, uh, it would be a separate process with the, with the post office and it would be up to them if, if annexation occurred, whether to change the address or not.
I mean, it wouldn't affect me, but I do think that's a big issue in this because, um, real estate values are tied to, to addresses. So, um, I think that would really, um, affect addresses. I mean, according to Zillow, Winfield has a much higher average, um, house sale per year than, than West Chicago does. So, um, that's another issue. Um, yeah, and then the address change, I would like to know, you know, what the process is for that. Apparently Trillium Farms has Winfield addresses and they're to the west of our neighborhood. But it's just a little confusing how that happened and just, and like more clarity on that.
Overlapping agencies, it gets confusing with postal addresses and.
So Amber Williams, my husband Chad and I are here and we would oppose the annexation. So thank you for your preparation.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. James, uh, Catty?
Katie.
Katie? Apologies?
Would it be prudent to, now, my legal, uh, lawyers? All right, I have that. Sorry, I'm off. But I can either way, all right, I give it my heart, I can squeeze up or out of them.
What's that?
I'm, I'm against the annex plan, but I was gonna say, I'm not one of the, uh, one of the nine included. I just wanted to speak for the.
James, can you step up?
Yeah, I would do that. Yeah, I'd do that.
Thank you.
Get it on.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, everybody can.
My cell phone broke, cell phone plan. Okay, um, I'm not one of the nine affected by the proposed annexation. In a way, um, I have a Winfield mailing address. Um, I found out, not because something was attached to my door, I found out from one of my neighbors, uh, quite a few are here now. Um, got three minutes. I gotta be fast, please, excuse me. Um, I checked the website to find out more information. Uh, you've got two other annex plans on there, nothing about this. So I knew nothing about it. I see the, uh, what is it? Uh, Carroll Stream and I see the San Charles Annex, two different annex projects, including, uh, expanding your size. Um, I don't have much time. I was a history major. I thought of some historical precedence to this. Uh, I'm sorry, but Hitler's Germany expanded prior to the war by annexation. Austria was called the Anschluss. People there did not get a choice to, do we want to join Germany? No, he just annexed them. Um, the Sudetenland, which people might not know about, Czechoslovakia, Czech Sudetenland was annexed by Germany and then they took all the Czechoslovakia. This portion, the nine properties, is the Sudetenland to me. And these nine properties, once they are taken, you guys can do your continuity or whatever the word is, continuity, I can't say it, to include the entire neighborhood. Just blank, it suddenly it's yours and we don't get any vote, we don't get, it just gets annexed. Um, I don't want to be part of an Anschluss. Okay, I have a Winfield address. I love using water from a well. I have a sewer system. I don't want to be hooked up to the water. People tell me it tastes really bad anyway. I'm sorry. Um, I'm happy where I am. Love my neighbors. Glad they're here tonight. Um, sorry, that was the reference I came up with, but that's what it feels like to me. Um, I'm against the idea of annexing a whole group of people and you're opening the door to get everybody else on board. And to me, that's criminal. And as I understand it, the twenty-year plan that you guys had in place is about to run out and suddenly the, one of the people that said they wanted to do it, they don't want to do it anymore. Isn't that illegal? I don't know. I'm a layman. I don't know. But, uh, thank you for your time. Um, I'm against the annex plan. It's not good for my neighborhood. The only people to benefit might be more revenue for West Chicago. I'm sorry.
Goodbye.
All right. Thank you, James, for speaking and, um, you know, I, I, I respect you, your, your thoughts and, um, the Anschluss might be a little harsh, but, uh, I get it. I get where you're coming from. I feel like I want to talk for like a half hour about how awesome West Chicago is now there, but, uh, I'll save that for later. Um, Christiane Lewis, you are next. Christiane Lewis, you are next.
Hello. Thank you, council members and mayor, for welcoming us all. On Saturday, October fourth, two West Chicago residents, both here legally. Were stopped, detained and humiliated. They were taken to the West Chicago Police Station, held without charge and released miles from where they were picked up. This was not only unjust, it was unsafe and clear proof of racial profiling. West Chicago deserves a system where no one fears being kidnapped under the law. The city can't control eggs, but it can control its own policies. I urge the city of West Chicago to adopt the same ice free zone Brandon Johnson has adopted for Chicago. To hold all officers accountable under the law, police officers. And protect civilians. Thank you.
Thank you. I. I will, Christiane. I'm not going to talk about it now, but in my mayoral comments at the end, I'll kind of address that a little bit more specifically. Gerald Clayton.
I don't have anything to say relative to what's going on. So. I live way over in Riviera Court, just here to see.
Here to be. Okay. Thank you for being here. Okay, Joseph Sheehan.
Hi, everyone. Hey. So I'm one of the properties that is affected. My name is Joseph Sheehan, the property owner of twenty eight West five thirty one Roosevelt Road in Winfield, Illinois. The pre-annexation agreement that we have signed up to that I'm, I bought the house and the property and the, the annexation agreement came with it. This pre-annexation agreement that is associated with the property is now unenforceable. This agreement is twenty years old and was originally created to prevent a Home Depot, a big box store that was being built in the area. We banded together because the village of Winfield was trying to take the property by eminent domain. The entire context that justified this agreement no longer exists. They may have had a better chance if it was Eminards at the time. Over the past two decades, the city of West Chicago has repeatedly violated this annexation agreement. They've allowed people to selectively withdraw from it, which basically made it null and void at that point. They, I formally withdrew from the agreement on October first, twenty twenty five of this past week, which I basically. Put sent around certified mail to everyone informing them. And I was allowed to do that under the annexation agreement. By formally withdrawing, there's not continuity between the other properties because my property sits exactly in the middle between the others. So you've now lost the contiguous nature of the annexation agreement and therefore it's void. The city has separately violated this agreement again multiple times, but more specifically three years ago when they filed a lawsuit against me. For trying to develop the frontage, which I have B two frontage on there. They sued me and then they filed the restraining order against me so that I couldn't speak at a public hearing for the development. Which was a violation of my civil rights. I also had six hundred thousand dollars in EPA funding that I had won. For that site that of course is no longer available because of the actions of West Chicago. In the court of law where we are currently proceeding with this, those will be put in for damages. Over the past year, three years, I've invested substantial time, effort and financial resources to maintain agricultural compliance. Submitting farm reports, obtaining licenses, qualifying for an agricultural exemption through the county. I paid over a million dollars for the property. And this was also that I could buy or build, buy, build a greenhouse on my property legally. Which I was allowed to do and I'm in fear that if this goes ahead, my agricultural exemption will be taken. And you will also try to take my greenhouse. This matter has serious and economic ramifications that the city's current legal counsel appears not to appreciate and shouldn't be able to appreciate because they've only been on the job for two weeks. I originally recommended Harry Lynn at Anso Click because I thought my attorney had told me that they were. Attorneys that were going to be able to compromise in this situation and that would become, it wouldn't come to this. Which is ridiculous that it has. It was a last minute thing and the nature in which you are projecting yourself is hostile. So we have no choice but to respond in a similar manner. So basically I've had to let my attorney go because he's basically set it up for me to get annexed at the last minute, which is. Basically unheard of. And if it does happen, it will be egregious. I will retain my right to have the annexation overturned in the court of law, which we currently are in. And. If otherwise, I would hope to, to settle this and all other matters with West Chicago and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Free play. Welcome.
Mayor Gobin, good to meet you in person finally.
You too.
After seeing you on Facebook so often. It's really hard to follow that. It's very deep and very technical and mine is more from the heart. I'll try and keep it really short with many of us feeling powerful and recent powerless in recent days with regard to having a voice in any level of government. I hope and pray that you all are truly for us, the people and respect our little bit of heaven. In the midst of the ever increasing suburban sprawl. Our property is not directly affected by this annexation or proposed annexation. But if this does proceed, we will eventually fall victim via the domino effect. My husband and his father built our house and I know many in our unincorporated area. Have quite a familial legacy that we wish to maintain and pass on to our kids. Please deeply consider our feelings and what we have at stake, not just economically. But emotionally. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Pachowski. My name is George Pachowski. I live on Washington Avenue, West Chicago. I've been here since nineteen eighty five. And I've been to quite a few zoning meetings. Starting with, I think, the one where they want to put Russ Nursery on the northern side of Roosevelt. I was also at the one where they're dealing with the Povey. Land development and the one where they talked about putting the Home Depot in and I can. Agree with the people are talking about the agreements that they had. And the people that were there that talked about. Check meeting, Winfield's. Annexation were actually seizing by eminent domains, the property and West Chicago coming in as a white knight to prevent that. Now it seems that. A whole new range of people are involved in this. And don't realize that the agreement then was not set. They actually annexed it, but simply to white knight Winfield. Allowing the Home Depot and getting revenues from Home Depot. So I'm against the annexation. For a lot of reasons. One is the legal thing that there was an agreement. There's also agreement when they annexed it, when they put in Povey. That it wasn't going to be used as a way to surround the rest of developments and put them in either Winfield or West Chicago. But you know, sometimes you can't trust politicians because they change over. Either by members or by influence.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Teresa. Smagus. Apologies again. We should have like a phonetic spelling on.
Right. Now that I still see it right now. Okay. Good evening, mayor and members of city council. My name is Teresa Smaggus and I live on Prince Crossing, West Chicago. I'm here tonight to strongly oppose the city's attempt to annex the properties within the ordinance, let's just say forty five. First, the notice residents received was seemed to be inadequate. Many only heard about this. About forty eight hours ago from a neighbor. And this seems very unfair to the residents. Second. The city is relying on a pre-annexation agreement that is soon to be twenty years old. Since then, there have been, I think, five sales of property of the total affected. That's nearly half of the owners that have never had an opportunity to comment. Third, there is an active litigation between the city and a current property owner affected by this. Moving forward with the annexation while lawsuit is still pending undermines due process and shows bad faith. Fourth. Annexation would presumably place real and heavy burdens on residents. We are talking about higher property taxes, some guestimates as much as nine to ten percent. And thousands of dollars each year in new water and trash service fees. West Chicago already has some of the highest water rates in the suburbs. And forcing us into that system would most definitely cause severe financial harm. Finally. Annexation without consent is not in the public interest. None of us sign petitions or ask to join West Chicago. Annexation should be based on cooperation and community support, not pressure and rushed votes. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the council to withdraw or deny this annexation ordinance. If you move forward despite these issues, please realize that homeowners do reserve the right to challenge this action in court. Can those of us present, please say aye if they agree with my statements. Thank you for your time and for listening to the voices of the people closely affected.
Thank you. Just a quick comment to that one as well. And I, I. Really appreciate all of you guys being here and expressing yourselves. And you're right. I mean. Many of us were not around twenty years ago when these things were agreed on, when the pre-annexation was agreed on. It's not quite true that none of you signed anything because it's because of this pre-annexation. Agreement that we are here because that was something that was signed twenty years ago. Having said that. What is legally possible is not the same as what is right. And. Again. I am against forcible annexation unless there's a compelling reason to do so. So. I just wanted to kind of repeat that and, and also. I don't want to throw my staff under the bus either. You know, in, in an ideal world, I would have been on top of all this and all over it and knowing ahead of time what was going on and. Everybody would have had much better notice. There has been a transition. We have had a community in crisis and there's been a lot going on. And so. When staff realized that this thing was going to expire. In a week and a half. They set things in motion very quickly to get it before the council. Because they recognize that they're not the ones that are supposed to make the decision. Staff is not supposed to decide. The city council is supposed to. And so. We. In the last few days. Put those notices on your houses just because. I wanted to make sure everybody knew that something was happening and. That was, you know. Apparently effective because got so many of you here. So that's good. But, but that's, that's kind of the process is that. Yeah, this is, this is a different group than was there twenty years ago. But again. To answer those who would have liked me to just made a unilateral decision, this is the body that's supposed to do that. And I have a lot of. Strong feelings about what we should and shouldn't do. And if I was the emperor of West Chicago land, you know, I would just make decisions, but nobody would want that. I don't want that. We are a society ruled by laws. And processes, even when they're flawed sometimes. So this is the group that you should be speaking to and I appreciate you being here. Bill. Bill B. Bill B. Make that music on myself.
Lived on Gary Mills since eighty seven. Don't want to be annexed in the future. That's about it. Don't want higher taxes, don't want city water, don't want to live off anybody garbage. I can raise my kids there. Don't want to be left alone. Retired now. Income's not that much. Can't afford more taxes here in Illinois. Will leave the state. Don't want.
That's it. Thank you. Stan Klimmer. Stan.
Say it again.
Stan Klimmer. Stan Kay.
Yeah, I have clarification.
Yes. Would, would you mind coming up just so that we can get you on record? I apologize, but. Want to make sure everybody online and in the room can hear you.
Actually, I have nothing to say because the lady was kind enough to clarify. The amended area.
Okay.
Not included in my area.
Got it.
I'm satisfied. I have nothing to say. And thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to even be here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Ruby. Ruby. Casades. Hey, Ruby.
Okay, hello, West Chicago. Hello. I want to begin by expressing my gratitude to Mayor Gobin for being present in our community. And standing by the safety of West Chicago's residents, that commitment to public safety and engagement is what true leadership looks like. So thank you. My name is Ruby and I come from a family of, of military and law enforcement. I was raised to believe in service, accountability and the principle that nobody, no officer, no agent, no official is above the law. On Saturday morning, we saw something very different occur. We saw federal agents claiming to be here to remove criminals. But they themselves acted like criminals themselves. On Saturday morning, I was at the gas station and I witnessed. Two individuals who were documented, a citizen were approached by federal immigration. They complied, showed legal identification, yet were handcuffed. As bystanders filmed agents pepper spray civilians. The men were taken to the West Chicago Police Parking Lot. And after realizing their mistakes, the agents drove them to random parking lots and told them to get out. The citizen still does not have their driver's license and they are living in fear of retaliation. A West Chicago Police Officer was on the scene and was told a citizen had been taken. No report was filed, no help was offered. That silence damaged more than trust. I sit here and I speak for the safety of not only myself, not only for a certain community, but for everybody in this room and everybody in this county. No help was offered because when law enforcement fails to act in the face of injustice, the public's message becomes confusion and fear. I say this with deep compassion for our officers. Because when trust breaks down, everyone loses. Residents hesitate to call for help, witness stop coming forward, officers lose the cooperation that keeps them safe. Fear isolates both sides. As a woman, I now walk carrying a whistle, not out of paranoia, but survival. I fear not only those who abuse power, but those who might impersonate it. And that fear doesn't just harm me, it puts honest officers in danger too, and that very much so worries me. When people start doubting the badge, the line between safety and threat blurs for everyone. This council has the power to begin restoring that trust and I come with ideas. First, conduct an internal review of why no police report was filed and whether city property or personnel was used by federal agents. Transparency is not an attack, it's a safeguard for the community and for yourselves. Second, please reaffirm West Chicago's compliance with Illinois Trust Act. So residents know our local police do not participate in civil immigration enforcement without a judicial warrant for their own protection. Third, please create a safe and transparent process for residents to report immigration related incidents. And ensure they're treated with dignity and protection under state law, all of us. These are practical lawful steps that honor both our officers and our residents. Let West Chicago be the city that proves accountability and compassion are not opposites. They are the same path to safety for all of us.
Would you mind just repeating the three specific requests? We, we were writing quickly and we'll get it on the.
Absolutely.
Reporting, but I just wanted to hear them.
Yes, sir. The council has the power to begin to restoring trust first by conducting an internal review. A why no police report was filed and whether city property or personnel were used by federal agents. Transparency is not an attack, it's a safeguard for the community and for our humans in blue. Second, reaffirm West Chicago's. Second, reaffirm West Chicago's compliance with Illinois Trust Act so residents know that our local police do not participate in civil immigration and enforcement without a judicial warrant. Again, for the safety of our humans in blue and the safety of our county. Third, create a safe and transparent process for residents to report immigration-related incidents and ensure they're treated with dignity and protection under state law. This man still doesn't have his driver's license and nobody knows why. And now he and his family and his four children are living in fear that somebody may come out and get them.
Just to respond to a couple of things. First of all, the easy one. Number two, I want to reaffirm that West Chicago is 100% committed to following the Trust Act, which means that our West Chicago Police does not involve themselves in immigration affairs unless there is a judicial warrant. And every time that someone has brought one of those questions to me or video or picture saying, hey, I think West Chicago was participating, I really appreciate the chief has been extremely quick in getting back to me with body cam footage, with video recordings. And each time I've been able to confirm that we were not involved with ICE immigration enforcement at all. That would be illegal for us to do and, and we don't want to be doing that. That is something that we're 100% committed to. So that one's easy. I was called to the scene on Saturday and lest anyone think that this was incorrect information, I can confirm that we did absolutely have two of our residents who were legally here that were detained. One was a citizen, one was a legal resident. And yes, the citizen's identification was taken and not returned. I apologize that my phone rang in the middle of the thing. That was actually the citizen calling me. And I am involved in trying to get his documents returned to him. It was very, very disturbing that two of our residents were detained for absolutely nothing that they had done wrong, but based on the, the current the current Supreme Court decision, they are allowed to, they are allowed to detain people or approach people because of the color of their skin or because of the kind of work that they engage in. Those are two of the categories that temporarily the Supreme Court has said that they can use those criteria. And that is absolutely wrong to me and that is very disturbing to me. And I, I just, you know, some of us don't live in that world where we're afraid that we'll get pulled over because of the color of our skin. But I, I want all of us to recognize that this community is scared to death right now because of those kinds of things. And it is extremely traumatic, especially on the children. We've got, we've got a community full of children who are just scared to death that they're going to come home and their parents aren't going to be there. So it's something I've spoken on before and I recognize and just one more thing I want to respond to directly, our police involvement. The, our police department has an extremely difficult job under normal circumstances. And right now it is so much harder for them. They have been going, the chief and I have been in the community, meeting with community groups, just trying to, trying to not lose that trust that we've hard, worked hard to build. And I, I understand why people are scared right now, but we need everybody to help us communicate the message that the mandate of the municipal police is to keep people safe, is to keep whoever is in our community safe, whether they are taxpaying residents of our city, whether they are from Lombard, whether they are just passing through on their way to work. That is what our police's mandate is, is just to keep people safe. Having said that, they are extremely hampered right now legally and that they are not allowed to involve themselves with ICE. They're not allowed to communicate with ICE. And so we are, I am happy to hear suggestions and to talk through those things, but it is just an extremely difficult line that our police are walking right now, trying to keep that trust, trying to communicate to all of our West Chicago people. Whoever is here, we are there, we are, we are, we are trying to keep you safe and that is our job. But we don't have jurisdiction to arrest or stop federal officers. So that's, that's not something we can do. And even if they did something wrong, we, we could initiate processes, but we would not be the ones to arrest them. I mean, if they did something clearly illegal, it would be other agencies that would do that. It's part of our system as it is. So all that to say, I hear you. Let's keep talking. And we'll consider your three things, but I just wanted to, I know a lot of you are here for that reason tonight and I wanted to address that as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Bear. And I would like to say this is, this is not just a person of color scenario. I have heard moms who are scared to take their, their children out, who are non-person of color, to see armed men in Abreville with open armed guns chasing another human being. That is traumatic on another laundry scale. And I do have a value and respect for our humans in blue. They have an extremely hard job and this should not put them in danger. I'm not asking for them to arrest anybody, but to keep that trust. And if a civilian comes and speaks to them on something, that they are fully trained and aware of how to be able to handle that situation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bear.
Rebecca Hackman.
I'm going to bring my timer up.
You, you're welcome to do that.
Good evening, council. Good evening, community. I'm also here to talk about what happened on, on Saturday. And as we just went through it, I won't rehash all of this. I will just say that incidents like this don't just traumatize the people that are targeted. They send shockwaves of fear through the entire community. So when people are afraid to drive to work, pick up their kids, go to the grocery store, go to the pharmacy, or even call 911, we're all less safe. So my recommendations for the council, adopt trauma-informed policing policies, which means training all city staff and police to avoid re-traumatizing residents during interactions and funding community-based legal and mental health support in partnership with local nonprofits. These programs can help residents heal from trauma, navigate their rights, and stay connected to the institutions meant to protect them. In addition, please designate safe zones, spaces like libraries, schools, and city hall, where families can seek help or information without fear of detention. These are low-cost, high-impact steps to rebuild trust and protect the city's moral and legal integrity. Thank you for your consideration in keeping the residents of this city safe.
Thank you.
Sherri Nicholas. Sherri Nicholas. Welcome.
Nice to be here.
I'm against animation. Thank you, Jill Sheen, from my letter. Well, that's what brought me in and I came here tonight. We're against it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tim Dixon. Tim Dixon. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. Neighbors. I'm against the annexation. Just same thing. Everybody's been saying, well, West Chicago, don't need it. I'm okay without it. Okay. It's kind of disturbing to me how quickly this went through. I don't know what the normal procedure is. Not a lawyer. Don't like to be in court, but I think a little more notification would have been better. You said the annexation agreement 20 years ago. Been sitting around for 20 years. Would you wait for two days before it expired? Don't tell us about it, you know? I heard about it from a neighbor, same thing. Didn't hear about it from you or anybody else. Saw on the Facebook that they were doing annexation, but that's on a different area. Nothing about this. So that's all. I just found it disturbing and I'm here to hopefully prevent that from happening. I'm, I'm not in the 11 houses, but I'm in the neighborhood next to it and eventually would encompass me. So.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you. I, I hear you on communication and, you know, ideally, we get it right in this process.
I just wonder what's the normal notification? What is it? Do you just come up with a number or does it happen? Or is there a standard procedure for annexation? Is that what?
According to what we were told by legal, we were not required to do any annexation to the property owners or excuse me, any notification to the property owners. And that's not the way we wanted to approach it, which is why staff went and hand-delivered the notices to the properties that would be affected directly by what was on, going to be on the agenda. So besides the fact that we've had transition of our elected officials, we've also had transition of an interim city administrator, interim community development director, and interim legal counsel. So all of the people that would have had that past experience with this, they're not here. So as everyone else was getting informed on this.
Hey, guys, if anybody wants to speak, turn to nothing, but let each person finish their.
One more question is, like I was here for the Trillium Farms annexation and it was brought up, is there any other annexation plans in the future? And they said no. And that was like, what, a city year ago?
Who said no? Just, so I'm understanding.
The council. I mean, somebody behind, one of the, one of those.
Okay.
I don't know.
A city council member.
Yes, but it was somebody on that side of the bed. So I mean, a little more notification. I don't understand why it has to be pushed through in two days. What's the, that to me, that seems a little sneaky.
So I'll, I'll speak to that one. It's the deadline. That's what brought it up.
Oh, I know, but it's 20-year deadline.
Agreed.
Yeah, I can. I'm happy to speak on it.
Let me, let me finish and then I will, then I will turn it over to our council. But again, at the, at the risk of repeating myself, I don't disagree with you on the communication. It should have been better. It should have been. But when staff realized that this was going to, the window was going to close, they put it on the, the front burner to get to this council meeting because they didn't want to be the ones to make the decision, recognizing that doing nothing would by default be a decision. And so when I spoke with our city administrator this week, we had a conversation, said we need to communicate with residents. That's why we put the notices on the doors. That's why I went and spoke with those of you that I could. I apologize. It was the day of. I'm doing the best I can within the constraints I have. I don't disagree with you. The communication should be much better. And what we are legally required to do and what Ms. Messino mentioned is not something that we are using as a pretext for, so that's what we're going to do. I, our intent, intent of this administration is to be 100% transparent and do as good of a job as we can in communicating as we can. So, you know, I'll, it, blame me. Blame me. I've been in office for five months. I didn't know that this was going to come to a head this week. So of course, something I've been aware of, it's been discussed. I've been in several meetings where it's been talked about. In an ideal world, yeah, I, I think it, next time, you know, hindsight 2020.
Hopefully.
But hopefully, hopefully, we get it.
You don't have to blame anybody.
Hopefully, we get it right tonight. Hopefully, we get it tight to right, right tonight. Everybody goes happy, goes home happy. And then we make West Chicago such an awesome city that five years from now, y'all come back and are begging for us to take you in. That's my ideal. That's my, that's my ideal scenario. All right? So with that said, I'll let our legal counsel speak because I'm a big mouth sometimes. It's his burden.
By no means at all was this an actor, a mechanism to try and be sneaky. If anything, the amount of transparency, transparency that the city has operated with and the amount of activity we've seen from the community has been, and I don't, I, please, please take this when I say it and mean it when I say it. It's been inspiring. I'm a neighbor. I live in Lombard. And to see the amount of people who come out and are actively engaged in your community is fantastic. The, the amount of work that goes into, from, from the staff here, the number of staff people that are here, over here on the other side that you can't see, that I'm pointing to, that are here every day, that are trying to figure out how they can best run the city, is, is inspiring. It's fantastic. It's part of the reason why I love being a lawyer and love representing West Chicago, excuse me, West Chicago, is the amount of people who actually like care about it. Mayor Bobby came and tried to talk to you as much as he could to reach out to people who were going to be affected by this. He didn't have to do that. We could have rammed this through if we wanted to be a, for lack of a better word, scumbag attorneys. We could have done this. We, and, and, and the city had every right and mechanism to do that. That's not the way that the city, that the mayor Bobby wants to, to operate the city. That's not the way that I think that the citizens want the city to operate at all. And as Mayor Bobby and, and Ms. Messino both said, like, it's all about transparency. So please, please do not think that this was by any means at all a way for anybody to be sneaky or underhanded by any means whatsoever. We had to deliver the notice. We had to comply because we were running up against a deadline, so there were just legal mechanisms that we had to comply with. So that's why we are here. Well, that's not why we're here this evening, because we have to have just our regular scheduled meeting. But please do not think that was any way at all the city council or the city by any means tried to be underhanded with you, okay?
Appreciate that. I just wanted to say too, this is response of two days notice. Imagine if you had put this in for a month. Okay, so this is like, yeah, it's a big deal for us anyway. I mean, I, I know, not to make light to anybody else's problems here, they're all big deals. I see you guys got a big agenda. I appreciate that. But, you know, this is what's important to us at least.
I am going to, I've got two people left. I'm, I'm going to risk going out of order and my friend in the front row, was it a question or just a follow-up on?
Question.
Yep, go for it.
Why does West Chicago want to annex us? What's the real reason?
Well, I think I answered that to you specifically on your front porch this morning. And I think let's get through these last two and then we'll have the discussion. And if necessary, I'll make sure that comes up, okay? If it gets dropped, it gets dropped, but if it, if it needs to be brought up, I'll make sure that that gets brought up. Fair enough. Robert Sandberg.
He actually stepped away.
Okay. Greg Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Councilwoman and then for the opportunity to share, I also rise from objection to the annexation. As you've heard from most of the people here. Much of what's been said here is from people who have an interest and it comes from a heart. My wife and I bought our property thirty eight years ago and built our house. We're on Washington Avenue, by the way, just a little bit north of where you're considering, uh, this annexation. And I can build that house. My neighbor can testify to that, but we have, we raised our kids here. We, we looked for that property and found what was, what was really gonna be good for us, we built the house, we had, uh, we have a lot, a little larger property. All of the properties in our area are from, I don't know, one and a half to three acres, something like that. What I'm concerned about, well, we are not immediately, uh, involved in this annexation is the reach. We know, I know what it, what you need to do to have that contiguous thing and coming around the forest preserve. And this, uh, annexation map that I took brings us right down to here, there's only a few more properties right here that you would have to annex. And then you would make us inside circle, we could be, you could take us immediately. And Mr. Mayor, I, we followed you in your your, uh, thing and it was it was, it was good, I know you from another life, you probably don't remember that, but that's all right. And so I, I guess what I would say, uh, in what else has been said here, the notice issue, I think is really, uh, a concern. That twenty year deadline has been coming for twenty years. And it's, whatever was coming up to this point was on somebody's desk for a while. It was in somebody's mind and what was, and what, what are we gonna do and when are we gonna do it? And it just is very suspicious that it comes two days or ten days, whatever it is before this annexation, annexation agreement expires. And I think what, what our friend said here is, I, I really, I, I don't have a clear answer on what you feel is the compelling reason. Those were the words, if you annex this. And then I guess the, the last thing I would say is, maybe we can get some clarification offside or after this, but why is it on this map that there are two pieces of property that are north of Roosevelt Road? Everything else is south, why? Be interested in having an answer to that. So I appreciate your time, thank you very much, I know it's a difficult job you guys do.
Thank you.
Consider, uh, consider the heart of the whole thing, just like you went through with your things, Mayor. It would be really helpful, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm gonna allow Ms. Messino to give a specific answer to your question about the two properties.
They signed the pre-annexation agreement twenty years ago, so they just that, those two properties are there simply because they're signed, I don't believe those two would even be in the list of ones that could be annexed tonight. Because they're not actually contiguous, but they're part of that map because they were ones that signed that original annexation.
They're not, they're not being considered for annexation tonight.
So in other words, there's nothing north of Roosevelt Road that's being considered right now?
Nothing.
Not at all.
Do you, do you have the annexation map that you can show us?
Well, this is the one I got off the internet. Which I think is pretty much correct.
There are, there are ten, there are ten properties and I don't have a way to put it up on the screen for you. Um, and yes, I have that map, feel free to share it with our friend down there if you want, but, um, there are ten properties and, uh, three of them are on, excuse me, two of them are on Purnell. Or is it three? Looking for the page. Oh, here we go. Alright. So. Yeah, it's, 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 it's it's three pin numbers on Purnell. Uh, commonly known as twenty eight west five twenty one Purnell, twenty eight west five thirty five Purnell. And twenty eight west five twenty Purnell. There are then, um, five of them on White Oak, commonly known as one south three oh one White Oak, one south two seventy one White Oak. One south two thirty one White Oak, one south two oh one White Oak, one south two eleven White Oak. And there are two properties, uh, I, I believe only one household. Uh, but on, on Roosevelt Road, twenty eight west five oh six Roosevelt Road. Excuse me, three, three on Roosevelt Road. Twenty eight west four eighty Roosevelt Road and twenty eight west five thirty one Roosevelt Road.
Okay, so I guess what my question then is, if this is not an accurate map. How, how do we even speak to the issue? I mean, if they're saying that these two lots were not even a part of the, uh,
They're part of the annex, they were part of the pre-annexation agreement.
Okay.
But they're not being considered for annexation.
How do we know what, what is there? If this, if you're saying this is not, how do we know what is being considered?
So that's, that's in the, that, that's in the, um, what we published on the website, which is, um, the city council minutes and then the packet that goes with it. It lists those ten specific properties and has legal descriptions of them. So that's what, that's what we would actually go by in the discussion.
Okay, alright.
Thank, thank you. Yeah. And we have one last one, Michelle Bowen.
Hello, I'm Michelle Bowen, West Chicago, um, so I'm, hi, nice to meet you, um, I'm just there's a number of us here from, um, Wayne Oaks Lane and around that area. I know you said that we're gonna talk about or, um, the discussion of the boundary change regarding, um, that area and Community Fellowship Church. Which I think is also Christ Fellowship, it must have changed its name, but, um, so it's just, for clarification. It's just going to be the church, however, we have questions regarding that.
Okay, and let me just clarify one thing, just for anybody who's listening, so there's two separate. Well, there's multiple things we've talked about tonight, but there's two, uh, separate things here that, um, Ms. Bowen brought up. One is the White Oak and Purnell and Roosevelt annexation, that is separate. And then secondly is the boundary change with, with Carol Stream. Which we have bumped until next meeting. Or even later, at least till next meeting to deal with, but yes, that was the one that was intended to only to only be, uh, to only include that church.
And that's the status currently, that it's only going to include the church.
Yes.
So then, um, the, when, is the time appropriate then to discuss that? If the next meeting?
You're welcome to use your time now to do that if you would like, but, uh, you can also, you're also free to uh, we'll, we'll announce whether it's next meeting or, or following.
Okay, and then we have to keep on, on the website to know when that happens.
Yes, so for first and third Mondays are our city council meetings. The, the public agenda of the meeting goes out on
Friday.
Friday. Um, so that, yeah, that's where we would.
Would there be any way that you would let, um, the Wayne Township Supervisor know of when that meeting would take place? So that he can
Call or email my office tomorrow, this week, and we'll, we'll, we'll set something up specifically.
Okay, and, and so our main concern is that, um, if pipes have to get put in, that somehow we might have to get the domino effect, uh, also the other concern would be if we had to pay somehow for the piping to be put in. Those are just concerns that have been out there and, um,
Who is we, if I can ask a clarifying question?
Yeah. Anybody raising your hand in this area, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Any others in the other room, so there's a, uh, over twenty people.
And you are West Chicago residents who are afraid that the burden of those infrastructure improvements will be
Placed on.
On, on West Chicago residents.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, um, and also the overreach that if, okay, so the same with, with the other annexations talking about, that, okay, so if it's including the church. Well, then what's, who's to say in like two years or three years? They're gonna push it on us, that type of thing.
Again. Excuse my, you know, uh, interrupting questions, but who is they?
The area.
Who, who is the they would definitely push that, would push that on the neighbors? Us, West Chicago, City of West Chicago?
Carol Stream. Carol Stream, yeah, so we're asking West Chicago to protect us, we like West Chicago.
Okay.
We wanna stay West Chicago and.
That's good to hear.
Did you hear that, everybody? Did you hear that?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly, so.
So that's where we're at and we look forward to meeting, I guess, further.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, thank you, and I believe Ms. Messino can kind of uh, clarify a couple things related to your questions.
Just a little bit of context, boundary line agreements between municipalities are basically just you stay on your side, we stay on our side. And so right now, what's the proposal that we want to move ahead with this church? Is shifting the boundary agreement, so the church that is asking to go to the Carol Stream side can, but it won't affect anything for anyone else on where their boundary line is. It doesn't put you into a pre-annexation agreement and Carol Stream has already told us that they wouldn't even be interested in pursuing annexing any of those properties. They're only trying to help out a church that asked them for help, we're trying to help out a church that asked for help. As far as the construction, it's anticipated to be very minimal. Because there's already a water pipe there for the school, so they just have to move it a little bit more. They anticipate that there will be very minimal effect for traffic or construction timeframe, that'll be a very quick, simple process. It is not something that is looking to go and affect anyone else, it's just helping one customer.
So do they have to get rid of their septic?
That would be between that church and Carol Stream. If they continue down the path of wanting this. So we're not trying to take anybody that doesn't want it, we're not trying to shame them.
To clarify for everyone that's listening, is that church currently incorporated West Chicago?
No.
No.
It is not, and so ju- just to clarify, boundary line agreements are different than incorporation, uh, and so we are not, this is kind of really the opposite of
Yeah.
of the other situation, we're not like trying to, you know, pull anybody in, but just this one, just trying to cut out this one property. Which has requested it so that their water and sewer connection becomes more of a reasonable prospect for them.
Yeah, the church requested it, well, because they wanna build.
What?
Um, an addition to their church, so town homes or nothing, no, 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 in addition to their church.
Alright.
So we're just asking that, um, West Chicago will continue to protect us and, um, know that we do not want any, any.
Can I, can I just make a request to, like, if any of you that are here, like, if, if you can like, uh, if, if you can coordinate just getting, uh, contact information for that group. Uh, I would be happy to try to facilitate communicating more after this meeting with those concerned. Thank you. Alright. So it looks like maybe we have one more person that wants to comment, I'm gonna give a last call for comment. But I do need you, if you wanna comment, to just come up to the front and fill out the little, the little paper, all I need is your name on it.
I don't need to fill them out.
Oh, 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 I, I, okay, I apologize, is it a clarification or just additional comment?
Just additional comments.
Okay, how about, give you one minute, is that fair enough?
Hi, my name is Amy Kozlowski, I live in neighborhood with one of my, my neighbors here. Um, that is not exactly part of the current annexation.
Okay.
But gonna get enthralled in it. I've been on the, in the similar situations like deja vu from twenty years ago, and people mentioned where Winfield was trying to annex us. And that was gonna require us to get city water, sewer, and the whole nine yards, it was very expensive at that time. We all petitioned to be against that annexation, we love our neighborhood the way that it is. And we did not want to be annexed to Winfield, which would have been nice, but we didn't want it. We do not wanna be annexed into, uh, West Chicago. We also support the neighbors that are being quote unquote forcefully being annexed, I'm not sure if that's the right term. But I believe that that is completely disrespectful to those uh, neighbors and I appreciate that the neighbors actually did notify us, and as you can see, this was a four eight hour notice, if there was more notice, you'd have many more people being against doing things that we do not want. We're very happy to be an incorporated West Chicago, support everything that the city does. And we just don't want to be annexed, that's it, thank you very much.
And Mr. Kozlowski, I, I, I now understand who you are, when I called your name the first time, I believe you weren't here, so that was why. Okay, I might have said it wrong, might have been I made.
You got my name right.
Alright. Got one. Alright, well, that, uh, ends our, our public comment time, thank you very much. We're so glad that we have so much participation in the local government. That's a good thing. It's what it should be. So I am going to that's what I'm, that's what I'm considering. We could, uh, we could decide to bring the annexation up to the front, it's at the end of the agenda right now. Uh, just so that all these good people who, I'm sure they would love to hear all about our, you know, upcoming purchases of equipment and so forth, but uh, they may wanna go catch the end of the Cubs game. I would entertain a motion if anyone, yes?
I, yeah, I would make a motion to move ordinance number twenty five oh zero zero four five to the front of the agenda.
Okay, so we would, um, go ahead and, and place it before four A.
Between four A and five.
Uh, well. So it'd be before four A. We would essentially be moving four A into Yeah. That legal?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
That's what y'all wanted to hear your lawyers say.
That's what you wanna hear from your lawyer.
Procedurely, procedurally, yes, that's okay.
We are looking for a second and, yes, we have a second. We are looking for a second, and yes, we have a second. Uh, all in favor, do a voice vote on that, we'll give it that, aye? All opposed, nay? Okay, all right, so we're bumping that up. So, if you're following along at home, uh, we are on what would have been. Number.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you, there we are. In ordinance annexing certain territory contiguous to the city of West Chicago. We have comments. Alderman Murano.
Yeah, so, um, obviously, thank you everyone for coming out and giving your side, and how you feel about that annexation. In some of the research, it may be, maybe helpful some context of this too, I know that there's been some frustration out there about how wait twenty years. And then a week before this is our, a week before it's gonna expire, all of a sudden it gets brought up. This annexation was part of a kind of bigger thing and wasn't relevant until the annexation of Tilling Farms, which has now happened. Very recently.
Alderman Murano, are you unmuted? Just wanted to be sure.
Can you guys hear me? So, um, once the annexation of Tilling Farms happened, then this actually became relevant. Prior to that, this annexation wasn't relevant at all to us, um, so with that happening more recently and time running out of it. That's why I believe why it's in front of us today, is that accurate? So that's, uh, um, it sounds like, and I, and I'm gonna steal a phrase from Mayor Bokey, but. The spirit of this annexation doesn't seem to be the full annexation process, it seems as though that the. The spirit of the, the idea of why we came to the agreement of the annexation was to. Um, help you guys avoid Winfield kind of sticking their head in and, um, annexing your, or changing the zoning in your area. That's, uh, um, again, I, I feel like this is just kind of a going through the motions of the process. But we had to get brought in front of us in order to make a decision on it today, but again, it seems like that decision was made a long time ago.
Yes.
Uh, I had, um, I, I think you already addressed this, um, not even that, um, this was part of something that happened twenty years ago. Um, but that the fact was that the citizens actually came to us and asked us to help them, and so. Um, as far as that goes, you know, I'm all for helping everybody as best we can. Um, I guess, and I think you addressed this, and I actually talked with Ms. Messino about this, but my concern moving forward was then. Would Winfield come in and swoop in and.
Yeah.
Actually, guys, so, um, as, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm, I am. Not necessarily in agreement with moving forward with this as well, but, um. I just also want to make sure that you guys are okay in case Winfield comes in, that they take you over, so I guess that would be the most question.
Make your comments on that. Um, let's, let's, uh, finish this and then, then I'll, I'll ask if, uh. We'll have a little bit more discussion here, and then I'll ask if, if somebody wants to address that question, fair enough? Yes, thank you. Okay. Counsel. Alderman Hallett?
Make sure I got this, uh, just in reference to all this, I remember a while back, uh, it was a part of. Town here that was unincorporated, and they did not want to be annexed, and they got annexed. And at that time, I wasn't a member of the council or anything, but I did come here and give a. Suggestion that I thought that was incorrect, and many of them still even now in that section are not happy with it.
I do.
So I feel, I can understand the feeling of each one of you not wanting to become part of something, and pretty much. My, uh, my sympathies with all of them.
Alderman Hallett.
Yeah, I know people who were annexed that you were talking about many years ago, and, uh, they didn't come here and. It happened anyways, um, there, that was very unfortunate. I don't believe in anything that should be forced upon people, so I would be against it myself. And I also want to commend the gentleman that said councilwoman and councilman, thank you very much.
Okay, let me just ask, is there anybody that wants to speak in favor of annexation? Okay, so I, I think. Oh, question. Oh, got a question, okay, yes.
I'm against it, that, uh, against annexation as well, I was like, in, how would the city look? Ones like, uh, an agreement like this, like, plays a lot of big, the dark big decision anyways.
That we failed to complete it, is that what you mean? I think that agreements like these, over time, can change, and that's not a black eye to anybody, it's just. Twenty years later, the landscape looks different than it did twenty years ago.
It wouldn't be used against the city in court, there's, there are no, you know, legal ramifications that would, like, that, that would be affected. As a result of this, where, where somebody would be able to say, oh, well, they did it, they failed to do it in this circumstance. They're not gonna be able to do it in this circumstance.
And I would hope that we would be an example to other communities around that. They say, hey, they maybe legally could have done something, but they chose not to because they were listening to the people. So. So I, I think, I think we could probably vote if you guys are ready, Alderman Swiatek.
What if in the future it's needed to annex properties? Could we go back and, let's say we had to for some reason, starting we go.
Can I, can I, let, let me interject something, we, we, we sat here for an hour and forty minutes. And listened to you guys, and now I ask that you give the same respect to our council, thank you. Yes, Mayor.
Let's say down the road, five, ten years from now, if we had to annex this property. Or other properties around that area, could we go through the same steps as we did? Before to do that without.
I'm gonna.
You know.
I'm gonna give a quick answer, and then our council can tell me if I'm wrong, but there would be nothing preventing us from going back and renegotiating. If for some reason, like I said, in five years, we make West Chicago so awesome that you guys all come back begging. To be incorporated, there would be nothing preventing us from doing that, we would have burned no bridges at that point.
Or those residents coming to us, wanting our services.
Want, wanting to be annexed.
W- wanting to be annexed, yes.
No, there's nothing that would prevent that, um, and in this, you know, what we wouldn't do is say, well, here's the agreement that we had twenty years ago. Let's have amendment on that, like, we would have to eventually start over from the beginning.
Okay.
Maybe that wouldn't be the worst thing, but, um, yeah, no, i- if that happened, we would be okay.
Or if a slightly different group of people came to us, we could have that tough.
Exactly.
Yeah. I think we're ready, yep, Alderman's out here.
Um, so I think, um, Alderman Beam has touched on it, right, so that, right now, by negating this agreement. And voting on it, uh, nobody wants it, Winfield can actually come in and try to do annex them as well, right? So, and then they can come back to West Chicago and set up some sort of an agreement again, it's kind of like to prevent, I guess that's how I understand it. That happened twenty years ago, so, uh, and, and the likelihood, I mean. Somebody's gonna want to incorporate that property, and/or more properties that are right now, uh, unincorporated.
So I, 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 I'd like to hear from our council and from our city administrator on that. And then I am gonna come back to someone in the audience, kind of with that question of, hey, are you guys okay? With the fact that this takes you out from our umbrella, and Winfield might come after you. But let's go here first, and then we'll go there, okay?
So I did talk with Winfield today, and they do not believe that they would be in a position to do. An annexation of these properties anytime soon, so that means the combination of their contiguity, their resources. Their current planning direction, they don't believe that that would be happening anytime soon. In addition, they have brought up the possibility that Winfield in West Chicago could. Have a conversation of a boundary line agreement, similar to what we were talking about earlier with Carol Stream, where we kind of just agree that. We wouldn't cross this particular line ever, or within a twenty or thirty year period for. And a potential expansion of our municipal boundaries. And so that with new leadership in West Chicago and some new leadership at Winfield, that's a conversation that can happen now. That there just really wasn't the, um, need or the direction to have before. So, based on current information, Winfield does not believe that they would be in a position to annex anytime soon. And they're open to having a collaborative discussion with West Chicago, just to figure out where we want to say the lines would be of what we would. Ever consider for a potential boundary.
And would there be a way to bring the community, the unincorporated community into that discussion in some way, shape, or form?
To be honest, I've never been involved in a boundary line agreement, so I can't speak to what that process would need to look like. Uh, it's also not something that we would be pushing to do right away.
Yeah.
Um, Winfield's village manager is relatively new to their position, we're still in the process of recruiting a new city administrator here. So we would want to let everybody get situated before we want to sit down and have those nice conversations in a more official capacity.
But again, to state the obvious, we could not promise you as West Chicago that Winfield wouldn't swoop in and. Try to incorporate you, uh, we'll be here and then, and then there, one more.
Well, I, right, I can't make any guarantees that a year from now that you're not gonna get a notice from, from Winfield. Saying that they're going to annex your property, um, and, and try to take you into their, uh, corporate limits. With that being said, I mean, like, the reality of it is they're not gonna do that, I mean, they're, they, they've been in communication with, with us. Um, it would be a very, frankly, like, poor political move for them to do, because they would, they would anger. Like, at least thirty property owners who are, could be very active voters to come out and, um, you know, voice. Voice their displeasure at each and every meeting, so I, I wouldn't worry about that, uh, so much. Um, if that did happen, then, you know, we, we've had that, we already, we already went down this road twenty, twenty years ago. Um, where, uh, you know, those, those homeowners, property owners came and spoke with, uh, West Chicago, so. I think that the lights would still be on if that happened, you could come in.
We're not burning any bridges, you just gotta tell everyone how awesome West Chicago is.
Yeah.
Problem.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, Alderman Ha- I, I, I promised this gentleman we would come back to him, um, but I'm gonna go to Alderman Hallett. Because it's his prerogative, and then I'll go there. Mr.
Very quickly, without.
Alderman Hallett.
Without going on too long here, with the amount of people who showed here tonight. If Winfield tried something like that, I'm sure you would probably be able to make them change their mind.
Okay, gentleman in the audience, yes?
Yeah, uh, in talking to Winfield, and I'm not an attorney or don't have any special insight, but you. Uh, uh, hit on the, the point that their, their threshold to get town goes about road would just be horrendous. You're, you're, there's thirty-some people that they would have to go to make this contiguous, and it just, they, that's what they tried. Twenty years ago, and it didn't work, and so I, I think that the problem would still be there, plus I have. Uh, my sewer and water guy here, who actually said, they don't have the sewer capacity.
Okay, um, can I suggest that perhaps we go ahead and bring this to vote? Okay, yes.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a question, but we put this, uh, ordinance number twenty-five oh zero zero four five.
Okay, second, Alderman Hallett. Okay, let's, uh, read this one off, uh, so to be clear. If you are voting aye, you would be voting, uh, you would be voting to annex the property. If you're voting nay, you would be voting to not annex, okay? Just make sure we don't, after all this, get, I can't get our wires crossed. Yes, let's call the roll.
Alderman Beebe.
No.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
No.
Alderman Santiago.
No.
Alderman Hallett.
No.
Alderman Rachel Munoz.
No.
Alderman Demus.
No.
Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Swiatek.
No.
Alderman Stowe.
No.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Nay, no.
Alderman Murano.
No.
So that does not pass. Can we all agree that sometimes this democracy works and we get it right? Thank you for listening.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You guys gotta all go, tell everybody how awesome West Chicago is now. Okay, we are going to continue. We're gonna continue on. Yes, let, uh, let's, let's adjourn for a, let's recess, my words right, for a. Way to go. Seven-minute bathroom break, we'll come back at ten, too. We'll improve a plan, but not on record, so I'll say it again. Okay, so we are, we've called meeting back to order, and we're gonna proceed with our presentation of our capital improvement plan. And we have our, uh, Public Works Director, who will put out here, who's going to. Yes, uh, Ms. Messino is gonna give one general update, and then we will give the floor over to Mr. Patel.
So throughout the budget process, we've promised to kind of come back and provide periodic updates. While this update doesn't pertain directly to the capital improvement program, I still wanted to. Uh, just kind of share some information at this point, as we're working through the general funds. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, our year-end expenses are expected to come in under budget. By about eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars, that is down from our initial estimate of one point three million. That we had very early in the process, and that's because we've got more overtime with lease activity, we have more. Details on expenses coming in, and so it's just a more accurate, more firmed up number, number. On the other end of things, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, I think when we had last spoke, we had about an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit. And fiscal year twenty twenty-six, that currently stands at about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Due to us being able to firm up some numbers, being able to move a couple things into twenty twenty-five. And so just continuing that this is a pretty lean budget that we're currently moving ahead with. And we're hoping to have some updated figures related to our revenues, which is kind of the other component of this for our October twentieth meeting. So now that we've kind of done that general update, I'm gonna get this presentation loaded, so that our Public Works Director, May Woo. Can give you some information about the CIP.
So just to confirm, that one point three went down to about eight eleven, but that was. Uh, counterbalanced by, uh, about a hundred and ninety-six thousand, um, of decreased. Budget deficit in twenty twenty-six.
Slend summary, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody, I thought everybody was here to listen to me talk, but I guess not.
We're still here.
We're gonna be, uh, going over the capital improvements program, the CIP, uh, which comprises of the motor fuel tax fund, this, uh, capital improvement funds. And the capital improvement surf fund, which is capital equipment replacement fund, um. It's like, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so before I get into the presentation, let me talk about, uh, just to give you a glimpse. Of, uh, glance of the infrastructure, they are the, the CIP fund actually, uh, spent money. Uh, this is anything but the water and the sanitary sewer related items. Uh, so we have a hundred and eighty-five lane miles of roadways, a hundred and thirteen miles of sidewalks that has bike path in this town, over twelve hundred streetlights, ten thousand six hundred trees and counting, eight operational facilities. This does not exclude any, uh, this excludes the storage facilities. The eight operational facilities include the city hall, police department, uh, public works streets division, public works facilities division, public works fleet division, the museum, uh, the two hundred main street building and the one hundred and three West Washington Street.
Can I just, quick thing, can everybody hear back there? We good? Okay, doing a good job of projec- projecting the voice.
Very good.
All right.
Drainage improvements, uh, culverts, storm shores, creeks, uh, traffic signals. Uh, we have two traffic signals that the city maintains hundred percent of it, which is on Wilson Avenue and Main Street and Fremont and Washington. And then we have a bunch of other traffic signals that we have, uh, twenty-five percent or fifty percent legs, depending on whether it's on a county ride, uh, highway or a state highway. Uh, street signs, pavement markings, tunnels and bridges. So this is all, uh, the infrastructure that is being funded by the CIP. Basically, CIP is a multi-year financial and a planning document, uh, that's going to identify, prioritize, and schedule major, long-term public investment projects. Uh, next slide please. So the revenue sources that comprise the CIP fund, uh, utility tax, which is NICOR, uh, this is calculated based on the number of terms that are billed to the customers. Our average annual revenue from utility taxes is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Home sales tax, which is at one point five percent. So there's been a lot of top bottomless tax recently. Uh, this one point five percent includes a zero point five percent home sales tax, uh, that was affected as a one-one-twenty-four. It does exclude items such as grocery types of foods, prescription drugs, non-prescription drugs, medical appliances and title assets. Currently, for the last two years, since the additional half percent has gone into effect, uh, we are averaging about five point six million to five point eight million dollars a year in revenue on the home sales tax. Motor fuels, motor fuel tax, uh, there's two components. There's a state motor fuel tax and there's a local motor fuel tax. Uh, the state motor fuel tax is basically the state of Illinois is collecting all the motor fuel tax from the entire state and they distribute it. Uh, it's, or the state statute thirty-five ILCS five oh five dash eight, if anybody's interested. Uh, it talks about how the breakdown works. But in a nutshell, out of the hundred percent of the revenue that the state collects, forty-five point six percent the state keeps and the fifty-four point four percent gets distributed amongst all other entities throughout the state. The fifty-four point four percent is broken down by Cook County at sixteen point seven four percent, all other counties at eighteen point two seven percent, municipalities at forty-nine point one percent, township and road districts at sixteen point seven four percent. Uh, so our average estate motor fuel tax, uh, revenue is about one point one million dollars a year. Uh, moving on to the local motor fuel tax fund, which is, uh, imposed at three cents per gallon on unleaded and diesel fuel. Uh, the collection on this began on November first, twenty twenty-two. We average about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in the local motor fuel tax. Uh, one thing to note with motor fuel tax is that the money that you bring in for the revenue for the motor fuel tax can only be spent on roadway related items, which is maintenance or construction of roadways. Uh, other than that, yes, sir.
Uh, that's both, both taxes is only motor, uh, road, roadway related expenses, or is that just a little bit?
No, both. Motor fuel tax can only be spent on roadway related items. Okay, thank you. Um, other than that, um, we, uh, also look for grant opportunities where their grant opportunities are available. Some of the grants that we frequently apply for is community development block grant. Uh, this is a, uh, block grant that's only available to residential neighborhoods in a low to moderate income area. The census tract has to have at least forty-three point one percent of low to moderate income population in order for their census tract to qualify for any kind of CDVG funding. Uh, the funding trickles through the housing urban development from the feds down to the county level. County manages this program and, um, generally, the county's, uh, total neighborhood investment program, which is what we were applied for, is about three point six million dollars. And the max they would cap it at per project is six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, surface transportation program, uh, this is funneled, uh, from down from the FHWA, which is the federal highway uh, administration. Uh, it goes down to, uh, what's called a metropolitan, uh, planning organizations or MPOs uh, for northeast Illinois, that's CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. And then from there, it trickles down to subregional council, which is where we belong to DuPage Mayor's and Mayor's Council. Uh, BMMC, um, their allocation per year is about eighteen million dollars a year uh, on the surface transportation program. Uh, once, for, you know, any projects to be eligible for surface transportation program, uh, the roadway has to be classified what's called an federally aided urban route. Uh, the federally aided urban route has a certain criteria it has to meet before it modifies. Uh, certain criterias include, um, it has to be, these are engineering terms, um, so apologize, uh, urban factor streets, minor arterial streets or principal ultras. So you're thinking like Illinois sixty-four, fifty-nine, thirty-eight, or Hawthorne Lane, or Washington Avenue, or Technology Boulevard, or something along those lines. It has to have an average daily traffic of, uh, at least two thousand or higher. And it has to have a logical terminal and other FAU routes. Um, so there's some criteria. Uh, we do have handful of FAU routes in the city. Uh, just because it's an FAU route doesn't mean it's guaranteed funding when we apply for it, because that eighteen million dollars is competing for the entire DuPage County. Uh, and all the other FAU routes that are in DuPage County across all the municipalities. Other special grant sources, uh, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities, uh, the redevelopment, uh, downtown Main Street, uh, grant that we just got two million dollars funding for, for the downtown redevelopment. Uh, EDP is economic development program. It's a job creation, job retention type of, uh, uh, grant fund source. Uh, every job that's retained is ten thousand dollars per head, and every job created, that's fifty thousand dollars per head. Uh, but only certain manufacturing industries qualify to be eligible for the EDP program. And the last is the ITAP, which is the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, which is also geared more towards, uh, beautification projects and transit projects.
So the EDP, do those grants go to the municipality or do they go to the, uh, industry?
No, it actually goes to the municipality, but you have to have a agreement from a, uh, private, uh, business or manufacturing firm to participate with the municipality. So there is, is an agreement because once you use the funding, then there's a five years worth of reporting that when you apply for the funding, so you've had a hundred jobs that you're going to retain. And, uh, for after the party is completed, then you have, you know, why the reports for five years after that.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Any questions? Okay, uh, the next is transfers in. Uh, so a lot of times when we're doing roadway improvement projects, there's a lot of underground utility improvements that go along with it. Uh, for example, waterman replacements or sanitary sewer, uh, rehabilitation. So when those components are coming in as part of the roadway projects, we will transfer those appropriate funding from the water and sewer funds into the CIP to fund that section of it. And then lastly, bond sales. Uh, bond sales are generally when you're, uh, issuing, uh, general obligation bonds for any specific types of improvements. Next slide please. Uh, so this is our, uh, federal, this, this by the twenty-six to twenty-thirty estimated revenues. Uh, I just give you, uh, some rough numbers on what the revenues are. Uh, but this is what we're projecting, uh, overall in each of those revenue sources over the next five years. Um, I want to point out the grant section of eight point three six million dollars, uh, pretty much, uh, most of that is already secured. Uh, we have two CDVG applications that we're going to apply for, so that's accounted for in that. But if we don't get those funding, we're not moving forward with those projects. But other than that, seven point one million is already secured.
Is that related to the, um, line replace, lead line replacement, or is that something?
That is not. That's a water sewer fund, so that'd be, be two weeks from now.
That true.
Um, so yeah, so we're, we're estimating revenue of about seventy-three point six million over the next five years. Next slide. Uh, and these are our estimated expenses over the next five years, um, broken down into different categories, uh, streets program, uh, twenty-three point seven million over the next five years. These are non-industrial streets. Uh, industrial roadways at twenty-one point seven, lightway improvements. Uh, these are all, uh, basically uh, small maintenance projects, which I will get into, uh, in the later in the presentation, uh, comprised of four point four municipal properties. These are all the city properties that I mentioned earlier in the presentation, uh, about seven point four million dollars. Uh, personnel boss, which is including salary benefits and all that kind of stuff at two point six. Commodities, these are just materials that we purchase to keep the road maintained. Um, other miscellaneous, which is legal fees and, um, some incentives and stuff like that. And then the professional services, we will hire, uh, to engineering firms, uh, to design and incorporate projects, uh, when, um, we get into some, uh, complicated projects. Uh, one thing to keep in mind, a lot of the projects that we do, especially the ones that are grant funded, uh, they're they may be programmed in our fiscal year twenty twenty-six, for example. However, depending on which agency we are getting approvals from, a lot of times surface transportation program, I'll give you as an example, has to go to, you know, Department of Transportation. And we have to get their approval before we actually go for a project letting. So sometimes it's scheduled for us for twenty twenty-six, but sometimes delays happen. Projects don't start until like mid twenty twenty-six, for example, and then, you know, construction carries over into twenty twenty-seven in certain cases. Uh, those things do happen. Uh, so a lot of times, uh, the funding does have to be carried over year over year. Uh, so, uh, keep that in mind. Uh, so sometimes when you see like, hey, we didn't spend this much money on a particular year, if you're looking at just year over year, but sometimes there's a product carryover component to it. Uh, next slide. One more, please. All right, uh, street program. So we mentioned twenty-three million and change going into the street program over the next five years. Uh, one question we usually get is how do we determine which streets are going to get resurfaced or worked on? So these are some of the criterias that we look at. Uh, if we have a grant funding source associated with that street and there is a sunset date, we make sure we hit that sunset date. Does that imply that makes a difference that next time you apply for grant funding? A lot of times your performance matters, such as we have the CDVG projects. Payment condition index, uh, this is a, a survey that we do, uh, it's a, if you've ever seen like, uh, a Google street view, and sometimes you can actually kind of see a shadow of a truck with two, you know, cameras mounted. That's basically what we do. Uh, so we have a consultant that comes in here and drives every city block and review, takes the footage, and then that footage is submitted into a, uh, program called Paver. And in that Paver, it's a very complex algorithm that will spit out its score from zero to hundred with that segment of the roadway. And that gives us an index. So zero being the worst, hundred being the best, and everything in between. I'll get into it in a little bit. Uh, there is a slide in this, uh, presentation about that. Underground utility needs, I talked about it a little bit earlier, uh, if there is any major underground utility, uh, projects that we're working on, and there's no other room to put it in the lightway, and we have to put it under the pavement, um, that also, uh, is one of the criterias we'll look at. Resident and business feedback, uh, is another big one that we look at. Traffic volumes and the type of traffics that we see on roadways, uh, that's another criteria. One thing I didn't list on here, but we also keep that in mind, is actually geographical consolidation of where the projects are taking place. We don't want to pick one street on the north side, one in the middle, one on the south side to comprise our program because you won't get a good bit pricing on it. So we try to geographically consolidate as many streets as we possibly can, uh, within reason to get a better bit pricing. So this is the, the payment condition data, uh, from a twenty twenty-five study that was just recently completed. So this gives you a snapshot of, uh, the hundred and eighty-five lane miles that we maintain. Um, twenty-one percent of our streets are in good condition, eighty-five to hundred means they require no maintenance. Uh, eighty, uh, another twenty-one percent are in satisfactory condition. Um, so there are between seventy and eighty, so they require very little maintenance. Um, twenty-seven percent are in a fair condition, uh, which is where really this resurfacing begins. Ideally, we want to catch every street before it drops below fifty-five, uh, because once it drops below fifty-five, the cost of improvements just staggers higher. It's, uh, to note, twelve percent of our total streets, uh, have a PCI of forty or below. Uh, so that's a very, uh, dire need. Um, and the overall rating for the entire roadway network is sixty-six point five, so solidly, um, yeah, it is an improvement though from, uh, three years ago.
Yes, sir. I was just actually going to bring that up because I know you feel to his own horn, but, um, the, the fact that this, this turn looked very different three years ago. Um, there, there's definitely been a lot of big time improvements and obviously a big focus on those, those failed and serious roads. Um, so it, it is nice to see this. I know it doesn't look great, but it's great to see the vast improvement over, as you mentioned, three years ago.
Maybe you don't have this on the top of your head, but you know three years ago, how many were under the fifty-five threshold?
I don't have that information, but I do have a study. So, yeah, but it's, uh, we normally do this every three years. Every three years, so we can capture all the projects we have done, uh, over the past two, three years. And so we get the latest data and then we use that because it's a five-year budget that we're preparing, so roughly about every middle, like two, three years in the middle of the five-year cycle.
But it's, it's improved from three years ago.
It's improved from three years ago because the infrastructure committee has been very supportive of us, uh, spending the money on the roadway improvement projects. Uh, next slide please, sir. Uh, so this is kind of like a five-year snapshot of, there is a map on your, uh, on your chairs, uh, that you can see it. I know it's kind of hard to see for the audience, I apologize. Uh, but roughly what we're looking at over the next five years is nineteen and a half miles of, uh, street resurfacing, just over three miles of reconstruction of streets, a major project in downtown, uh, on Main Street. Oh, that's our downtown beautification and modernization project. And a traffic signal project that I'm really working hard to get out of Hoover Land. It's at Illinois thirty-eight Technology Boulevard. Um, so that kind of gives you a snapshot of what we're looking at, um, over the next five years. And then it's color coded, so you can kind of see it. So there's a legend on the bottom right there that talks about, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. So we try to stick to it as much as we possibly can, uh, with, uh, you know, some caveats to it. There are, sometimes there are projects that will leave fog the other ones. Uh, if the conditions severely deteriorate at times. So it is fluid, um, but, uh, we try to stick to it as much as we possibly really can. Uh, next slide, sir. One more. Uh, so industrial roadways, um, this is just a snapshot similar to what you just saw earlier, but just focusing only on the industrial roadways, uh, that we have in town. Um, so twenty-six percent of our industrial roadways have a forty PSI or below, that mean, PCI or below, that means, uh, they're all pretty much in, uh, you know, reconstruction. Another thirty-seven percent are below fifty-five, between forty and fifty-five, so very poor condition. Um, and then, uh, overall rating is fifty-five point two, which is also improved by forty-eight point eight in twenty twenty-two, largely because of the harvest or road reconstruction that we completed, uh, before the study was, uh, started for twenty twenty-five. Um, so, um, we are, uh, I mentioned twenty-one point seven million dollars in bond revenue that's, uh, coming in earlier this year, uh, in one of the slides. Uh, that's going strictly to industrial roadway projects. We have about three miles of roadways and industrial roads that, uh, really need constructions. Uh, I will, uh, get you some, uh, payment condition evaluations in the next couple of slides for individual, uh, streets. Uh, but that's the, that's the cost of, uh, reconstructing those, uh, three miles of roadway over the next three years. And, uh, we are, um, working with, um, any, um, program that would, uh, help us apply, uh, for the bond funding.
The twenty-two million is bond funding, is that correct?
There is the intact, yes. There is, uh, there is a decision council has to make on that, uh, in time was, we're going to split this twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Uh, we have, uh, projects identified in each one of those years. See that on one of the slides, uh, on the next slides. Uh, it's also important to know, we, we actually, we have just a, a quick calculation, um, on, um, water consumption, um, really, um, we have about seventy-three hundred water meter counts in this town and eighty-seven percent of it is residential, so about sixty-three hundred of them, and about thousand of them are industrial, thirteen percent. So thirteen percent of the commercial industrial, uh, water meter, uh, actually represents, um, fifty-four percent of the water sales. Um, so thirteen percent of commercial industrial represents fifty-four percent of the water sales that we do on a annual basis. So this business is using a lot of water, uh, and, um, you know, there's, uh, you know, it's helpful for us because we can have those water sales stream through the water mains and stuff like that. Um, next slide please. So yeah, so our, our plan right now is to issue bonds in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Um, and the bond is, uh, actually with a zero point five percent home sales tax increase, not zero point two five percent home sales tax increase. Um, so I apologize for that. Uh, but that's the home sales tax increase that was, uh, uh, effective January of twenty twenty-four. Um. Question. Uh, next slide. So this next slide is talks about which project we're doing in which year. So in twenty twenty six, uh, we're gonna be working on Fenton Lane. Uh, this is between Helena Drive and Washington Street as a PCI of nine point eight in twenty twenty five. Uh, next project is Western Drive. Western Drive and Downs Drive are actually combined into one project because of the proximity. Uh, they're both between Presswood and Industrial Drive. Uh, Western Drive with a PCI of seventeen point four. And Downs Drive with a PCI of ten point four. Uh, twenty seven, we're gonna be working on industrial drive, which is from Downs Drive with Hawthorne Lane with a PCI of thirty eight point five. In twenty twenty eight, we got Howard, I had fourteen PSI. Howard Blackhawk and Arthur, if you know, this is actually just the West of Paris or by the DuPage Airport there. Uh, it's a fourteen PSI on Howard Drive, Arthur has a six point five and uh Blackhawk has a twenty twenty two, twenty two point two. So all go below forty uh PCI for reconstruction candidates. So these are the projects we will be funding with the bond sales. Um, and our intent is that. We're gonna work on design, so for twenty twenty six, we're working on the design currently. Uh, once we bid the project out, once we know what the bid amount is, that's when we will go out and uh sell the bonds, so we know what that amount is. Um, and then same thing with twenty seven and twenty eight as well. Um, next slide, dear. Thank you. So this is kind of like the bond repayment schedule, kind of hard to see, uh, but if you. Uh, it talks about a group of bond of the very left hand side is the twenty twenty six bond issuance at uh just over nine million dollars. Uh, to construct those twenty twenty six road improvements in the industrial area. The the assumed bond rate is at four point four six percent. Um, in twenty twenty seven, we're forecasting about eight point one million in bond issuance at a four percent rate. And twenty twenty eight, five million dollars at a four percent rate. So obviously the rates will be a factor of the baby issue of bonds. Um, so these are just projections at this point. Um, but overall, it's a payback. Um, that you can see over the next twenty years or twenty 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 seven, it's going to take us to uh pay off that last bond, should we continue for that. Uh, next, yeah, yes, this is kind of like a zoomed in version of what that uh overall payment looks like. Um, so a total of uh twenty one point seven in issuance, thirty three point two eight in uh repayment. Um, there is a optional prepayment, um, there without uh any penalties. Um, but generally, when you're doing a bond issuance, you have to set a date. Um, normally about eight or ten years out is when the, in really, um, to start looking at paying it off.
So. Uh, go ahead, Alderman Moreno, and then I'll.
And so, and we do have enough data now at this point now to indicate that the um, the previously agreed upon home rule sales tax that we are going to commit to. In this bond will be sufficient in funding this without interfering with any other budget term.
Yeah, so. No, no, I didn't. Um, so prior to the the zero point five percent home rule sales tax increase, I took an average from twenty one to twenty three. Um, the average home rule sales tax at the one percent level was about three point seven million. And uh, I mentioned that with the zero point five percent increase, we're looking at about some of them five and six, so it's about two million dollars.
Can you repeat that last part?
It's five point six roughly with that, uh, in the, in the last two years, average is about five point six. Uh, since we enacted the uh, the extra half a percent. Uh, prior to that, it was three point seven, seven, so roughly about one point nine million, if you were.
So, right, so. So that getting towards that more than cover or or gonna be where our payments come over.
So I, I do want to just kind of point out, because I think this is important for everybody to know, that. Um, we're spending about thirty million dollars on roads over the next three years. Which is considerably more than we've spent any of the last ten years. Um, and there was a lot of, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there was a lot of deferred maintenance things. That have gone on for a while, that have led to us having extremely low scores on some of our roads, particularly in the industrial. Um, and so what we are. Deciding to do, and I just want to make sure that we all understand this, is to fund that. Um, uh, thirty million essentially with bonds. And so I know that, you know, our city has taken great pride in running our budgets without going into the red. But we are, we are deciding to take on this debt, and I understand Alderman Moreno's. Um, uh, you know, uh, reminder that the sales, um. That the uh home rule sales tax, that was the purpose of the increases which went into effect January twenty twenty four. Um, was to pay for that. But just to be clear, we are deciding that for the next twenty years. We're gonna be paying almost two billion dollars in debt per year. And um, that may be the best thing for us to do at this point, but I, I, I just think it's worth acknowledging. That we are gonna be, i- if we do this, we are, um. You know, we are committing ourselves to the next twenty years of two million dollars of of repayments. Yes.
Yeah, and so to to Mary's point, he's not wrong, we're playing catch up. Um, but we've got, we had some roadways that are well behind. Um, but some of these industrial, specifically when we talk about the bonding, I mean, it. Be quite frank, some of them are getting close to on passing. And what I say, I'm like, you can't drive down there. Um, so yeah, to to defer them in order to to make this happen, you know, maybe it would take us thirty years to get these roads done. I mean, we, we wouldn't be able to have businesses back there because you can't drive through them.
And I've also heard businesses are having trouble. Property owners are having trouble leasing space back there because of the condition of the roads.
Yeah.
And so, yes, I just kind of maybe I can then acknowledge that we're playing, we are playing catch up here. But I want us to go into it with our eyes open. Yes.
So are we playing catch up because we just ignored it, left it behind and put it in the back burner, or how did we end up here? Then now we need to play catch up. Uh, was no money allocated previously?
My understanding is that we did not allocate as much as we should have in the past.
Yeah, so I, I can't speak to it personally. I, I wasn't on the council, one of those decisions were being made. Um, but it's my understanding that the council did decide not to forward with a lot of those projects. In efforts to not increase taxes and sales tax, things like that. Um, so out of abundancy of concern for that, unfortunately, the department had suffered, it seems to be, is that our, our streets and all of this. But again, that, I wasn't on council's, I didn't want to speak.
So that's. The hand we were dealt, in a sense. So now we decide what's best going forward.
Yeah, and I, as Alderman want to point it out, yeah, some of those are really impassable. I would not recommend driving your personal vehicles down there, but you're certainly welcome to take a walk down there.
Please don't. Says the city attorneys.
All right, uh, next slide, please. Loading to the ground. So these are all the city owned property improvements that we have planned over the next few years.
Uh, let me just clarify one thing. I was not throwing Mr. Mahul, Mr. Patel, Mr. Mahul Patel under the bus like. That deferred maintenance was prior to his coming to the city of West Chicago, so. Just to clarify.
If I may just to touch on my previous point, so then. By us concentrating on these roads, uh, the industrial roads, and I noticed that you went over city streets and I was looking at the plans for the. Actual city streets and improvements. There's nothing that's being left behind, you know, that we're concentrating on this from now to kind of like fix it. And we're, you know, in five years, ten years, we're gonna leave something else behind that uh, we'll need to have that, this sort of adjustment as well.
No, so let me, uh, there is a sheet on your packet there, right? If you, if you're just looking at that sheet, that's our five year roadway program.
Okay.
That's at a three million dollars. The industrial road is about twenty two of that, right? So, so we're not leaving anything behind as much as we can. You know, do with our bandwidth, we're gonna try to do as many as we can.
Right, and I'm sure that a lot of different factors come into play, right? Uh, the industrial part probably through more businesses, you know, more traffic. You know, everything else that goes along with that. The streets, I think, you know, more properties that are built on those streets and more traffic again would probably add to the deterioration.
Yeah, so we are building concrete roadways now, right? So those are gonna last longer and we are pulling tension up, continue on with the provided maintenance. That's required to not get to a point where we're at.
Alderman Moreno had a point.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that to, to answer your question, I, I think the best way to answer is that, that's the whole reasoning behind the bonding. Is that so we're not continuing to use uh the tax hours that we would already been. Um, used to do our, our residential streets and everything else like that. We're not deferring that over to the industrial area, the, the bond money, we're taking care of that. Um, while still being able to take care of our residential streets. So, so the, the good news is, is that we're catching up, but at the same time, we're not falling behind on it. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you. Right, uh, city owned properties, uh, these are the city unoccupied properties, you know, um, I, I. Did my best to find out the ages of these buildings, uh, but you can see most of these are. Almost fifty plus years, uh, fifty maybe, or some of them are seventy and some of them are over a hundred years old, right? So uh, these are the uh, again, these are the properties that we own and uh. Uh, storage facilities on the bottom, uh, they are not part of the operational facilities, but there are, there are facilities still we have to. Check, we have to maintain, we have to make sure there's no leaking roofs or broken doors or windows or what have you. Uh, we're not seeking in, in order to putting a lot of money into those storage facilities. But the, all the other uh facilities are actually operational facilities where uh staff does operate out of. Um.
Next.
So this is our twenty twenty six uh game plan uh for the municipal properties. Uh, we're looking at uh multiple projects here. Again, this is all. Um, you know, to answer your questions, Alderman Santiago, right? These are some of the other projects that we have to work on besides the roadway program. Um, so facility projects are also part of our C I P. Um, so City Hall, we are looking at, uh, R T U is a rooftop unit. Uh, replacement, which is basically the H V S E system, the B A S stands for the uh. Building automation system, which is the controls of the rooftop unit. The retaining wall back here on the parking lot is uh cracking and falling apart, uh, so that's that. Um, police station, we already have a project that's already uh awarded, uh, same thing, rooftop unit and boiler replacement. Uh, it's an ongoing project, but that's just to carry forward uh what we anticipate uh to care. It's over a million, almost, almost a million dollar project. We anticipate about two thirds of it will be done this year and carry forward the next month into twenty twenty six. Uh, Public Works Streets Division, uh, the underground storage cleanup, uh. This is a underground storage tank uh for in-house building facility that was removed uh in the nineties. However, there was some, um, it was deemed as a leaking uh storage tank by the fire marshal back then. Some cleanup was done, the tank was removed, but there are some remnants that remain, so we still have to do some cleanup out there, so that's what this is. Um, the museum, which is on the uh National um. Register of these stored places, uh, is uh got a lot of uh issues with that building itself, the exterior masonry, roof, windows, the doors. The fire escape, um, it's in a pretty rough shape, uh, so that's what uh those costs are there for. Um, and then uh, one nineteen West Washington Street, we do have plenty two facilities there. Uh, we're looking at, this is the building demolitions for those two facilities and then continue to do some design and testing on the site. Uh, for targeted soil remediation based on overall conceptual plan that would be approved by the city council in the future. Next slide. Uh, twenty twenty seven improvements, uh, a glance here, um. I mentioned there's a couple of facilities at one nineteen West Washington Street that are gonna be demolished in twenty twenty six. Uh, a lot of our off uh seasonal storage from Public Works actually takes place at those two buildings. Um, so we need to offset that covered storage somewhere, so we're looking at a potentially extension of a current building over at our Streets Division. Um, half of our Streets Division parking lot is gravel at the moment, uh, so we surfacing that parking lot. And then um, in above ground fueling facility, so our current fueling facility at these streets is forty year old underground storage tank. This is not the one that we removed. The current one that we actually operate with is about forty years old. And it's also at is useful light, so before that becomes a leaking storage incident, we want to make sure we replace that with an above ground fueling facility. Um, with diesel and unleaded fuel. Um. Our Clean Division, uh, another building that's off of Candy and uh Blakely Street, uh, needs a new roof and some floor improvements there. Um, the one nineteen West Washington side is a placeholder here uh for whatever the conceptual plan is finalized. Um, then we want to do some targeted remediation on that site uh in twenty twenty seven. Uh, Susquehannia Park, uh, the retaining, yes.
Just to clarify for everyone, I, I asked Ms. Pacino just to make sure I was understanding correctly. You had in there for twenty twenty six building demolition, so that's the two buildings, the two storage buildings that are on that west, West Washington site. Which we, we were not able to test underneath them because they were existing buildings.
Right.
And that's part of the process of why we have to, in order to. Fully test everything on that site, those buildings have to be removed and that's why there's kind of some questions in there, what might need to be remediated.
Yeah, so there is a concrete slabs on both of those buildings that would have to be removed, then we can do the soil testing to see if there is any remediation that is required. Underneath those foundations or slabs or what have you. Uh, and the last one is Susquehannia Park, uh, this is a major black retaining wall, if you walk that site. Uh, it's uh looking like it's like fall apart at some point, so we're just budgeting for some uh cost uh to uh do retaining wall improvements there. Next slide, please. Um, twenty eight to twenty thirty, uh, these are kind of the major projects that we're looking at. Uh, the Streets Division uh has multiple different buildings, uh, we have a uh South Garage that we're kind of repairing right now. Uh, with uh a leaking roof, uh, but we ultimately need to replace that roof. Um, police station, V A B box and ceiling tiles, the V A B box, V A B stands for variable air volume, which is basically just regulating the volume. Of amount of air that goes to different sections of the building. Uh, so we are doing the H V S E rooftop unit this year, a couple of years out, we're gonna replace the brains, the controls, if you would, of that building. Uh, and then uh, the next one is the equipment storage building extension at uh Hawthorne Lane. So there's two buildings at one nineteen site, we're replacing, offsetting one storage. At our one thirty five West Grand Lake facility, which is our Streets facility, we don't have enough room to put all the storage there. We do, but we may want to do some zoning challenges there. Uh, so the idea is to extend another existing building that we have over by the salt bar and on Hawthorne Lane. Um, and then a placeholder for future facility projects is in there, uh, at four hundred and forty five thousand dollars over the next five years, so. Uh, next slide. Uh, I mentioned earlier, uh, there's right away improvements, uh, of almost four point uh four million dollars uh over the next five years, that's what this is. Um, so we do a lot of annual maintenance programs, uh, these are pretty much citywide programs, um. Our roadway payment market program, which is basically street striving, uh, the roadway payment markings, the stop cars, the crosswalks, what have you. So we spend about an average of forty thousand dollars a year on uh keeping up with those roadway payment markings. Our concrete ma- maintenance program, uh, which basically consists of doing sidewalk, urban gutter repairs, alley repairs throughout the city on an annual basis. Uh, we spend about a hundred fifty five thousand dollars a year on that, um, sidewalk cutting program, uh, so this kind of complements our concrete maintenance program. If a sidewalk is heaved, uh, and it's causing a trip hazard, otherwise if it's in a good shape, uh, you know, we would just go out and cut it to make it level. Uh, so we spend about twenty thousand dollars a year, uh, doing uh basically triple, triple hazard reports, if you would. Uh, payment rejuvenation program, uh, this applies to uh asphalt roadways only. Uh, so what this is, is basically when we go out and repaint the roadways. We'll come back in a year or two after that and we apply this rejuvenation product. That basically penetrates through the first layer of asphalt, gets into the bottom layer of asphalt. And basically, what happens is that the bottom layer of asphalt is supposed to be flexible, but it basically um becomes rigid. Over time, and then introducing this uh rejuvenation kind of makes that flexible payment flex again, so it doesn't start cracking and stuff. Uh, forest trimming program is ten thousand trees uh in the city, uh, we maintain uh. Uh, trimming and removal programs through there, it's a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. Right away maintenance program, uh, this is basically all the city sites, uh, the landscape medians that we have across uh all the city on Route thirty four, Route thirty eight now. Route sixty four, Route fifty nine, we have over a hundred and thirty plus sites that we need to mow uh for seven months out of the year. Uh, so that's what this is, so we're averaging about somewhere about. Uh, right now, our cost is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, but we added a bunch of medians on Route thirty eight this year, so we gotta add account for that for next year. So we're looking at about close to almost two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in uh mowing cost of all those areas. So we're looking at about close to almost two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in uh mowing cost of all those areas. Spring tree planting, this is our annual tree planting program, it's sixty thousand dollars a year. Uh it's good for about a hundred and thirty trees, depending on the pricing of the trees. Um and that's an annual program against citywide. And the last one is a fall tree planting program, uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So some of you may know that we did get a three hundred thousand dollar grant through the Morton Arboretum to introduce a fall tree planting program, we're actually in the middle of one now, uh we just aborted it, uh we're just waiting for the contract to start. So we're spending eighty five thousand dollars on the trees this year, and then the remaining balance, we're gonna spend over the next two falls. So twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven.
So that two hundred and fifteen includes the arboretum grants money?
Yeah, so that three hundred thousand is fully uh reimbursable. Uh so we have to spend it, and then we have to uh send all the invoices and all the paperwork, uh. So we're gonna do, well, I intend was to do one hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh but the bids came in at eighty five thousand this year, so we're gonna try to maximize it over the next two years. So I went through a lot of slides, um questions I could answer? I wonder, so what I think we were asking the questions as we were going through slides, thankfully? Yes, sir.
One question, town road to railroad tracks over there, that's getting more miserable every day.
Yeah, so town road is actually just awarded, uh so that's one of the service transportation programs, so that's an after you route. So we did get funding for it, it just got I D A approval, I D A just awarded that contract. So we had a pre-construction meeting last Friday with the contractor, we're hoping to get started a little bit during this year, a little bit of drainage work. But majority of that work will take place in uh twenty twenty six.
Yeah, I'm tired of getting thrown in alignments in my car.
Definitely don't drive through the industrial world.
Okay, well, thank you so much, and um.
Well, there's more to it, I just wanted to make sure you've got any questions.
Wishful thinking.
Now, well, this this next.
I'm so excited for this next segment.
Let's go. All right, so the next topic, the next thing is the capital equipment replace fund. Uh so this is basically all the city vehicles, equipment that we own, um and how we fund it. So basically, it's an in-house fund transfer, so each department has certain of our vehicles, and each department has a line item in their budget that basically talks about surf, and so depending on how many vehicles you have allocated to your division or your department, you're funding that portion uh every year to set aside for future replacement. In a nutshell, so taking the next slide please. So this is kind of what we have on our uh replacement schedule by department. And uh this is number eighty six pieces of equipment or vehicles, uh only includes that are on the replacement schedule. There are forty nine other pieces of equipment that are not on the replacement schedule, but still on our fleet, meaning that we're still using them, but they're not gonna be replaced, when they die, they die. So um but those are still needed for operational reasons. Uh what it doesn't include is the attachments, so some of our equipment like unloaders and backhoes and stuff like that, that have multiple attachments. Those multiple attachments are not, either right, but they come out of the surf, and uh those are not actually in this uh total count we are here. Looks like this. Um this is kind of what our surf revenue and expenses look like over the next three years. Uh our surf revenues are based at seventy five percent of the contributions uh from each department uh or division over the next three years. Uh like I mentioned, once we purchase a vehicle, very next year, we start allocating uh funding to replace that vehicle based on its useful life. So if it's a ten year useful life, fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment, we'll put five thousand dollars away each year for the next ten years. So when it's time for replacement, that fifty thousand is already available to us. Um so our our surf uh balance at the moment, i- as of January one twenty twenty five, was at three point one million dollars. However, it is one point eight five million dollars of expenses that are coming out this year, so uh in all the, we ordered a a few power trucks over the last few years, some people on the infrastructure committee know that we had a hard time getting those power trucks. Um so we were finally getting those power trucks, and we're gonna get it outfitted, so hopefully we'll have them next winter, uh not this winter.
Yes, sir, just while you're on subject, has the lead times on everything come down? I know it's gotten better, but I don't I don't know if it's good or not.
No, so the, you know, the F one fifties, the F two fifties are fine, uh but anything that's custom built or anything that requires an outfitting or a chassis that has to be built from scratch, it's not mass production.
Next. Just a real quick um question, uh back one step. Um you said that you, that there's a vehicle that you bought, fifty thousand dollars, you put aside five thousand. Costs of things are going up and up and up, do you have any kind of cushion in there for increased costs of those vehicles?
Yeah, so um in our spreadsheet, we have confrontation. Yeah, so these are kind of, this is the kind of snapshot that you can kind of see what's uh getting spent uh by the departments uh each year for the next three years. And so we, like I mentioned, I I at the beginning of twenty twenty five, was a big one million dollars in the surf funds. We are expecting, you know, expecting by one point eight five million dollars worth of uh invoices this year, that brings it down to by one point one and change. And then by reducing the revenues and or contribution like twenty five percent for the next three years, we, when the hypothetical scenario that looks up until twenty thirty one, we should be okay.
To to Alderman Santiago's question earlier, you know, are we, you know, Robert Peter to pay Paul? We did make a, well, we we did make a decision for the twenty twenty six budget to decrease the surf uh by how, what percent was it?
Twenty five percent, and I would like to actually shift that a little bit with some additional context if you'll allow.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, that is one area where we kind of move things around to make things work and all that.
So in order to balance the twenty twenty five budgets, the previous budget that had been put forward was only funding surf at fifty percent. When we put forward our proposal for the twenty twenty six budget, we initially came forward with the idea of funding this at a hundred percent like we should. We came in, we realized, hey, revenues aren't gonna quite get us there, so we made a cut twenty five percent from that funding goal of a hundred percent. So in some ways, we're doing a better job than twenty twenty five. But we are decreasing from what our original budget request would have run.
Yeah. Yeah, and you'll see some folders of the major equipments on the next couple of slides here, but those, some of those major pieces of equipment are coming due for replacement. So these are not your everyday vehicles, these cost a lot of money uh to make and uh purchase. Uh whereas, you know, everybody knows in the last, you know, few months here, tariffs, you know, chat talks have been all over the the news, right? So uh we are seeing impacts of those, even those vehicles that were purchased a few months ago, right? They know, um the vehicles uh that we used to be able to get for forty thousand dollars just don't cost forty thousand anymore, like fifty fifty five thousand in certain cases. Um so just keep that in mind, so when we're replacing, you know, when we're funding the surf at a seventy five percent as opposed to a hundred percent, we are making a bet that, you know, we're not gonna see a huge inflation for us or another tariff or all that kind of stuff, right? So yes, my hypothetical scenario runs us to twenty thirty one in a positive balance, but there is a good chance, you know, there are things that are not on, not on control. Things like that happen, we're gonna probably run into some issues on replacement schedules. Um so definitely something we wanna kind of keep an eye on, yes.
So um seeing the the big piece of equipment for the services that they're used is uh is it an option or has it been, you know, and uh looked into to outsource that particular service that is utilized by some of these bigger pieces of equipment that are sort of unique, if you may, right?
Yeah, so we, I will, I'll take the street sweep for example, because that's an easy one to pick on, right? Uh so there are always a lot of towns that would do contractual street sweeping, however, the quality of the sweeping will go down. Because we ran, we ran that analysis last year. We were looking at participating a joint bid with uh, I believe it was Willow Brook, Willow Brook was going out to bid. Um so you can set your own sweeping schedules, you can say, hey, how many times you wanna come and sweep? What are they gonna sweep, how many times they're gonna sweep? But then you're at, you're at the mercy of their schedule, when the contractors are available. Uh depending on how large your contractor is, right, uh you may see contractor appearing other towns, maybe if you're going, for example, if I'm going in a a bid with a neighbor, right, you know, neighbor will has got a lot more mileage to cover and stuff like that, right? So those things will impact, right? Um so we have looked at those options, but even in those cases, right, the quality of the service will go down and the cost actually goes up.
So we are looking at those on a case by case basis?
Yeah, the ones that we can, uh ones that we can, like an end loader, I mean, there's nothing I could do to outsource that because it's such a versatile piece of equipment that we use for hauling, pushing snow, you know, pushing, you know, gravel, you know, loading trucks, what have you, right? So um we will use it on water and breaks and stuff like that too, so uh it's got multiple uses, right, so we just kind of outsource that kind of stuff.
No, uh we just, uh do we need to make a motion to extend our meeting time?
So I did double check the code, and the code says meetings shall stand adjourned at ten thirty P M.
Okay.
Unless extended, so.
Thank you.
We've got a better time.
We got a little bit more to talk about.
I'll stop right there. So yeah, I need uh a lot of information, and you guys, uh so happy to answer any questions, uh we have to.
Yeah, thank you very much for.
Get that man a waters.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, that uh brings us to number five, discussion possible action to approve city council meeting minutes. Uh it's from September second as September fifteenth, do we have a motion? Yes, Alderman Hall. Okay, and a second, Alderman Smith, thank you. Can we voice both that?
Yes.
All.
Is that for both dates?
So that, yes, so we're looking at uh both dates, um approving the city council meeting minutes, I assume everybody got a chance to look at them ahead of time? Yes, discussion, uh Alderman Bibi.
Uh yes, on the minutes for September fifteenth, item four, hold on, let me figure out here. And thirteen B. Fifth paragraph under that section, there's a paragraph ends with, it's a sentence with, who would be the whistleblower? And I don't think that was what we were talking about, I believe she was talking about who would be the whistleblower auditing official, perhaps? But I don't think she was actually referring to who would be the whistleblower.
Whistleblower auditing. It's audited, the auditor, the whistleblowing auditor.
In in code, I've written it, it's not any official, but either, whatever it should be, I don't believe it should be whistleblower.
Okay, anything else?
That was it.
So can we um vote to accept the minutes with that, with that amendment? Uh do we need to uh take a new motion on that, or?
We have a motion second.
Somebody want a motion that we accept?
Good.
Yeah, do, yes, do the motion in a second, and then, okay, Alderman Marano?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September second, twenty twenty five, and September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, with the amended changes.
Alderman Smith, second, fifth, all favor? Fantastic, woo, look at this guy. All right, number six, discussion possible action to approve corporate disbursement report from October sixth, twenty twenty five. We have a motion, Alderman Smith?
Yes, I make the motion to accept the uh corporate dispersion report in the amount of two million, two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty five cents.
The second, all right. That's why I text second to that, a discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh we are making cuts. Everything. Are we still able to like give the grants that we like, put out there for like the like residents or like the people that want to do with you?
Like the downtown?
Yeah, like specifically the 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 owner was applying for the grant, so he was able to, he's able to order up the rates in the book. We'll give those grants, like, but I would like to make you.
So we have, we have some, um we have some on tonight's agenda, and uh Tia just informed me that the ones that like we have in can, kind of in the queue already, we are able to fund those, there's a number of them that are kind of in process already. Is that is your question? Any other discussion or questions? Okay. All in favor? Oh, yeah, thank you, uh poll roll.
Alderman Dimas.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Nate.
Alderman Hall.
Aye.
Alderman Pareto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stowe.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Marano.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago, just wanted to begin off with, if there's anything that you wanted to?
Um there's several things on here that I gotta follow up with, um um one of them being a, I don't know, um Brain Industries came up as a, as an item for me, three thousand seventy dollars, I don't know. You know, basing on our last uh meeting that we had, you know, they were uh renting out their face, so I I don't know what we're paying them for. And again, it might be a minor thing, but just items that are, you know, it could be a a sixty dollar charge that there's not enough description for me to, you know, identify here for um other contractual, just as a description for fifteen hundred dollars. I don't know the context of this, so. So this is a regular occurrence for what it's worth, so.
So if you have like specific questions, um definitely, uh.
Yeah.
All right, um the uh that brings us to number seven. Uh so we're gonna have the reading of the proposed consent agenda. We have items not sent to committee. So I'll read that unless anyone else really feels like reading. Ordinance number twenty five oh zero zero three two, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Chicago to define certain terms in its liquor code, to create a new liquor license classification and regulations addressing the sale of packaged alcoholic beverages at gas stations. B, ordinance number twenty five oh zero zero four four, an ordinance amending section three dash one three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Chicago to address changes of ownership and or organizational management of an existing liquor license. C, resolution number twenty five R zero zero four three, a resolution, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a funding agreement with Anthem Excavating and Demolition Inc. for demolition and site restoration of three twenty two High Street, three twenty eight High Street, four thirty five Main Street and four forty one Main Street. D, resolution number twenty five R zero zero six six, resolution authorizing the ma- the mayor to execute a downtown investment program grant agreement with Randall M. Uh Leleos for twenty sixteen, and sorry, two sixteen and two twenty two Main Street. E, concur with the mayor's appointment of Dave Carlson to the Environmental Commission for a term ending April twenty twenty eight. So uh is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Uh uh yes, Alderman B, seven A. Seven A?
Okay, for point seven, I have a plus seven B.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'd like to kind of make a comment on seven C, which I can do whether or not it gets pulled, but um uh just kind of explaining a little bit about that.
Can I cry?
Are those houses being the ones?
Yes, those are houses, those are four houses. Do you wanna pull it from the agenda or leave alone? Okay, so um we have removed, I have an item seven A and seven B. So would someone like to make an abortion, a make a motion to approve items C through E as the established consent agenda? Yes, all missed out, and a second from Alderman Switek.
I'll show the comment, uh just one real quick for E. Uh Mr. Carlson has been on part of the Environmental Commission liaison for the city and Mr. Carlson has been to several meetings and has been participating in and uh seems very engaged.
Yeah.
With uh the commission and its purpose, and so I would hope everyone would.
I also met with the Alderman, with Mr. Carlson, uh and I also would agree with that. He's been at, I think, most if not all of the um commission meetings, even though he hasn't yet been uh made a member and uh so, yeah, very, very pleased to uh recommend that appointment. Uh. So um.
I mean, I meant the demolition to approve C, D and E.
Okay. Uh. Then we will uh vote to. Wait a second, I thought Alderman Stout motion in Alderman Switek seconded it.
Yeah, that was established and now we have to approve.
Right. Uh wait, though, that was the establish?
Right, that was voting for establishment and now we do a bold.
Okay.
The proposal again.
Somebody, somebody wanna make a motion to um approve items C through E? Alderman Switek and second, Alderman Santiago. And um let's let's call a roll on that.
Quick point of order, did we vote on the establishment?
We did not, we did not, I was just looking at that.
To establish the consent agenda, so we need to do that and then do the roll.
Thank you, my apologies. Um so we had a second and somehow we got way late there. But uh let's vote to establish uh the agenda that was that was motioned by Alderman Stout and seconded by Alderman Switek. That's a voice vote. Right, it's a roll call.
Roll.
All right.
Wondering that myself. Um okay, Alderman Stout. Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Pareto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Marano.
Aye.
All right. Um I would entertain a motion to.
Oh, I didn't know. Sorry, I jumped right over you.
Aye.
My eyes are getting blurred.
I entertain motion to approve items. Approve the consent agenda, Alderman Switek, do we have a sec? We had a second from Alderman Santiago, you still want a second, okay? Alderman Santiago, and we will call the roll to uh approve the uh amended consent agenda.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Pareto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Marano.
Aye.
Uh I just wanted to make a quick comment on the um uh the demolition of of those buildings because I wasn't always for that. Um and uh. I I I walked all those properties with city staff toured toured each one of them and uh and six others. Uh and these, 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 these buildings, uh I concur with city staff that at this point, it doesn't matter what I think we should have done five years ago. But because they were left for all this time, I mean, there's no, there's no going back at this point. They are, they have been left unattended, the utilities have been cut off, there's mold issues in some, leaking through roofs in some. And at this point, I mean. There's other buildings that we may talk about that might be salvageable, but but these four um at this point uh it's 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 too late to save them even if we wanted to. And there uh there is a possible, well, there's a purpose for them next summer that we are hoping to be able to make public um once we get things uh arranged, um which will be a good and positive thing. So um uh we we can't make it public yet because we're kind of working with somebody on it. But uh any of you that wanna, any of the council members that wanna talk to about it later, like it can, it can be, it can be shared with you, but uh but it'll be a good thing, so uh that's that's my comment. Uh we now move to. Number ten. Um consideration of items A and seven A and seven B. Uh let's take seven A uh to start and Alderman Demus, did you wanna give any explanation there?
Yes, Your Honor, uh so the liquor commission met on the this item or these items both actually, uh they are concurrent. Um what it, what it was is that we have one establishment that had a longstanding um liquor license that included to sell spirits. Uh but then when we made the change within our liquor license for the new gas stations that were coming into town um to only allow uh beer and wine. Uh what happened was then this other station then um came to us asking for a change because they had invested funds into making theirs um a place where they could still contain spirits. Um they voluntarily took off all of the um smaller uh liquor uh components to try and um be in alignment with what we were looking for uh for them not to have accessible uh liquor that could be easily walked out with and drank in their cars. Uh so um but the liquor commission also felt that this was an item that needed to be discussed amongst the whole council uh because uh we were part of changing the liquor ordinance uh to start with. And so that's why it's before you now um to make this decision about allowing this gas station to continue to sell um spirits in their store along with their wine and beer. I think that's pretty much so good.
Alderman Marano.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman, for that, so I'm all right. Um yeah, so there's two things on here and I brought this up every single time it's come across us and it doesn't look like it's changed in the ordinance yet. Um but the single serve beer at sixteen ounces, I I don't think is a good idea. Um unless I'm reading this wrong, but uh number two, on the class C six. And it gave here and it prepared less than sixteen ounces, shall not be sold in any personal. Oh, I'm sorry, and then the sales individual bottles can be strictly prohibited, so it does that include all the things? Single serving them, or is it only things that are under sixteen ounces?
No, it's only the under sixteen ounces what it was, um the other um alcoholic beverages that are going to be sold are gonna be in the larger amounts, except for.
Sixteen ounce could be a single beer, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then um the spirits should not be sold in containers less than two ounces, which still kind of, those little shooters can still be sold, then, correct?
We we do have a representative from true north here as well, so if you wanna, yeah, come on up. Um and might help to kind of clarify.
Yeah.
Those two issues. Do you wanna just repeat your questions succinctly like?
Well, actually, it was it was more for the.
Okay.
That that put this together, but yeah, I was just trying to make sure that I understood what was written here, but so the, we are going to allow the smaller liquor bottles.
Not to shoot the shots.
Well, it says less than two ounces, so we had two ounces, it wouldn't go up.
Hmm, so, so.
That has to be all. Like four or one ounces will be good? No, 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 no.
Okay, so.
Spirits shall not be sold in containers less than two ounces, so.
Which line are you on, sorry?
Yeah, so that that leads me to believe that two ounces and.
Page three or five in section.
I'm not reading that correctly, I apologize. I do, okay. I'll take any clarification, I apologize if I'm reading error.
Is there a? Alternate that you're.
Yeah, when we had this got that we had talked about doing full size um liquor bottles that would be allowed there is for for spirits. Um two ounces or.
What what would that, what would that mean in terms of a?
Sounds like this.
I'm not seven fifty would be. To be a full liquor store bottle in the United.
Is that, is that?
Like, so going back to in twenty thirteen, we built the store and everything, we brought liquor in for the first time.
Yeah.
Um there was no restriction on the single serve bottles, the small shooter bottles, if you will. Um and someone asked us at the time not to sell those and without any restrictions on us, we removed those completely and we've not sold those since. We don't intend to sell those, to be honest with you, I don't know if they're two point one. But I certainly have no.
That was my question.
Those really tiny bottles, um when you get into a little bit larger bottles, then we would like to have opportunity to sell those. We don't think that, you know, stopping at a gas station is gonna be any different than stopping in a liquor store to get some of those things.
So so if would it, would it restrict you guys if we were to go to three or to four? I honestly don't know what a what a shooter.
No, we don't intend to sell those single serve shooter type things and I I think they're actually only an ounce and a half, but I'm I'm not positive of that. But whatever they are, we can figure that out and I I'm, we we don't intend to sell those.
Okay, so Alderman Marano.
So I think just for me, it's it's just important that we have it in the ordinance written properly. I understand that he has no intention of doing it, but as we allow this license, if somebody else did somehow qualify for it, I think the verb can be good to.
Alderman Bibi.
Just a point of clarification.
Mm hmm.
I did some research for the meeting.
Hmm.
Two ounces is fifty nine milliliters. Most of the little shooters or nips that you buy in the market are fifty milliliters, so they, most of them do not qualify under this law. But I I do, I do question why we cut it so close with two ounces.
Right, so. You said most of them are.
And those are, and it's. Most of them are smaller.
One point seven, and those are one point seven hours.
Correct, they're smaller than.
Yeah, so that is smaller than.
There are fifty milliliters, not fifty, we're allowing fifty nine milli.
Thank you for the conversion. So if we were to just make an on the fly amendment and call it less than three ounces, would that, would that meet the? Meet the um concerns, would that alleviate the concerns while not getting into some unintended consequences? Alderman Marano.
I guess my question would be for you then, what what size spirits were you looking to sell, would would be the smallest container?
Yeah, anything larger than that, I mean, anything larger than the single trick shooters, so pints.
Do we know like what what those are, sorry, I don't know the conversion, yeah, those are like. Well.
Better than a nine.
Right?
I just think.
Is eight ounces, so that would be sixteen ounces if I am not mistaken, so um. So would would calling it less than three ounces?
Why don't we just do it sixteen ounces?
Yeah, I won't find you see.
No smaller than sixteen ounces.
Yeah, no smaller than sixteen ounces.
So. Do you guys all have pints as well?
Have pints, I don't believe so, okay.
Alderman Santiago.
You know, I'll go back to my previous point, I and to your point, what's the difference stopping here than stopping at a liquor store?
Yeah.
It's the it's the same, I mean.
I think we're all, I think we're all on the same page here.
Yeah.
And to your point, Alderman Marano, why cut it so close by going to two when it's maybe one point seven, but maybe somebody decides to sell it at two point one? But also why cut it so close if it's sixteen and somebody decides to sell it at fifteen point eight? So I like, I'm thinking that if we called it, if we called it four?
Four.
Yeah, for that that we wouldn't, that they wouldn't sell less than four ounces?
The same thing, why don't we go five? Why would I go?
Well, because.
By that number, yeah, it's like, it's the same thing, but.
Because.
I'm sorry.
Because at the end of the day. We are talking about a concept, a principle.
Correct.
But we are trying to quantify it to put it into a law. And so it seems to me that uh it seems to me that the principles that we're after is that it wouldn't be single serve. Uh and somewhere between two ounces and sixteen ounces where is where where that falls. So in my mind, cut that in the middle. Call it nine ounces, I mean. At the end of the day, yes, this is a subjective arbitrary number that we are putting it to, but I think the principle, any of those numbers I think would adhere to the principles that we're trying to follow. Alderman Marano.
I I mean, it doesn't have to be subjective or arbitrary, if sixteen ounces is the smallest he would like to carry, I don't think we should allow anything smaller than that, so that that would be our number.
But. But to your point about why cut it so close if somebody tries to.
We don't want to be able to, anyone else to be able to sell anything smaller. If it's fourteen ounces, twelve ounces, whatever, why why would we allow that?
Let's go Alderman Demus.
Yeah, so uh Your Honor, the um the thing is, it won't be anybody else, it would be just this station. This is the, we're only making this exemption just for this station.
Right.
It is not for all the other stations or any, you know, so this would only affect them. So what we have here is really only for this particular station and, which I didn't get to was, if this particular station changes hands, this license goes away, so it's not like it can continue on or into perpetuity, so it's it's gonna be filled.
Yeah.
If they sell.
Alderman Santiago.
I'm I'm gonna go back to to him being limited on what he can and cannot sell. But I I don't think we should tie his hands by not allowing him to sell two ounces, three ounces, whatever, when you can buy two or three ounces down at the liquor store.
Yes.
Down the street.
So I think at the end of the day, we're gonna vote. And if someone wants to propose an amendment to make it higher than what is listed on this paper, they can do so, and then we'll we'll need to, we'll need to vote on on that amendments. Yeah. Yes, yes, you do, yes, that's correct. I guess. Okay, so um I I and just, you've mentioned two things. So um there was the, there was the item for spirits. And then you also were asking about item two.
Single serve beers.
Single serve beers.
That's.
Beers in containers less than sixteen ounces shall not be sold to any person in quantities of less than six cans or bottles of, just for the sake of argument, how would you change that?
Um well, so my my concern with the way it's written, and and again, I apologize about misunderstanding the way it's re-written, but that would lead me to believe that if it was sixteen ounces or more, it could be sold single.
Yes.
Is that how everyone else is reading it?
Uh I I'm going to ask Mr. Sturp to. Oh, and we have a staff member that would like to speak to that. Like her, yeah.
Thank you.
Come on up.
So it actually is, while it's combined in one bullet, it is actually two separate statements.
Okay.
So Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong here, however, it is actually sale of individual bottles and cans is strictly prohibited.
Of any kind of.
And yes.
That that's very helpful.
However, I will clarify that in that um there is the ability to say, for example, craft beers where you are packaging them as um, because this is the same language that we have for the C fours.
Correct.
And so that is where you are able to then package sort of that craft beer or packers, what have you, which was allowable under C four.
If as long as it's sixteen ounces or more or any kind.
Um so less than sixteen ounces have to be sold in six cans or bottles. If it's greater than that, then it can be packaged.
Four.
Yes, exactly, yes.
Yes, I mean.
Consistent with C four.
Okay. So.
Right.
I I'm gonna restate that and you guys tell me if I'm understanding, understanding correctly. Or do you wanna make your additional comment first?
Well, I could, I just wanted to clarify, so the two ounces.
Sorry, that. Can we motion to. Can we motion to extend the meeting?
Want you to extend.
Ms. White and Dan. Okay, all right. Alderman Demas seconded by Swiatek. Uh, this is voice vote, right?
Yes, voice vote.
All in favor?
That motion and vote uh vote was held at ten thirty. Yeah, so we're good.
Can we say meanwhile?
I got ten thirty on my phone, so. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Um, so the clarification is on the containers less than two ounces. That was actually the direction provided by the city council is that there was no a desire to not have the travel bottles or the airline bottles, whatever they're called. And so that is why this language crafted specifically. Because one point seven ounces is an airline bottle.
Correct. Yes.
So that's why there'd be, there's like, there's no sense to to amend that, to change, to take that language out.
That that language is good.
Okay. Now we know why it's two. Yes.
Okay.
But Eric, please, Brian.
Questions? Alderman BB.
I just have one comment to make.
Okay.
The only comment I've received from the public on this particular ordinance. Was a hundred percent against this. So just so everybody knows, I'm going to vote that way.
Okay. Here to share what?
A public comment. Hundred percent of constituents that have contacted me on this are against this.
Oh, 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 I I I meant, uh, did your constituents?
They were opposed to the expansion of the C four license in the first place and they're opposed to any additional liquor sales in the city.
Okay. All right. Alderman Demas.
Yeah, just wait. Um, this is actually changing a C four to a C six, so it's a it's actually a different license altogether.
Yes, it's it's an additional license.
Yeah.
And that would be the opposition.
Okay, okay. So I've said this before, but I I'm not, I don't have like an expand alcohol sales agenda. But my my thinking on this is that if we're gonna sell alcohol, which we do. Let's be as fair as possible. And this seems, this seems fair for us to not go back on our word. What I think, yes.
In motion fairness, again, not not to some conversation more, but I'm guessing the rest of the gas stations will not have this fair.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. Um, I think we bring it to a vote unless anyone else has anything uh that hasn't been brought up before. Okay, let's call the roll. Did we not take a motion in a second already?
No.
We're supposed to do that before we discuss.
We're tired.
We were.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, it's, really? All right, Alderman Santiago. Is there a second? Okay, Alderman.
Your second.
Was to, is that, were you motioning to approve A and B together?
Uh, yes.
Yes. All right. Any other discussion? Let's call the roll.
Alderman Santiago.
Yay.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Name.
Alderman BB.
No.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
I will abstain.
Alderman Hallett.
No.
Alderman Correto Munoz.
Abstain.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Swiatek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Marano.
I actually get to vote?
No.
No.
No, because it's abstentions are, yes.
Abstentions go with the prevailing sign.
No, there's no prevailing sign.
No. Two, three. Right? Wait, hold on.
So let's double check that.
Yeah, okay, so we've got.
Why don't you just read through the roll and what their vote was, just so we can double check?
Okay, so for Alderman BB, we have a no. And I'm just gonna go with the ones that said yes or no, so we skip on the abstain so we don't get confused. Alderman Santiago, we have a yes. Alderman Hallett, we have a no. Alderman Demas, we have a yes. Alderman Smith, we have a no. Alderman Switek, we have a yes. Alderman Stout, we have a yes. Alderman Avinia Soto, we have a no. That's the same, so. You get to vote.
You get to vote. Get to vote. As I've said before, I find this to be the best way to be fair. In our community, so I am going to vote to approve the license.
That wasn't fair.
All right. And that brings us to. Reports by committee.
I mean. Mr. Patel, great uh presentations there. I don't think I could follow that very well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they had a lot of infrastructure today.
All right, public affairs.
No report.
Okay. Finance.
Nothing from the finance this time.
Okay.
Nothing from the.
Okay. Unfinished business. New business? Yes, on appointments and ah, I left my paper in my office. I can be back in thirty seconds.
We'll be gone by next.
Can we keep tense?
Yeah, you can keep kind, but it doesn't start until I leave the room.
I think we need to start the meeting.
I mean, I would love that, because I'm still here in the building.
We are still.
Yes, everybody, just a reminder, we are still recording for the meeting.
I'm back.
Thirty five seconds.
Thirty five, oh man. Okay, so I'm going to count on my fellow. Commission members, where are you?
Yes, member.
Member, oh, to to help me here, okay?
Okay.
But we have uh, we have six, we have six appointments. And uh, it's nine commission members total. Of whom one is me, one is Alderman BB, one is.
Alderman Myers.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, there we go, Alderman Myers. He's not here. Next one, yes, next one, um, representing not for profit is uh Sarah Phelan. She is our head of our museum, uh people made visible. She's an attorney. She's kind of our resident historian. Um, and uh, I think um, she's pretty well known to.
Yeah.
Most of the group. I think we'll take these one by one. No?
Didn't we do Sarah?
I thought we were gonna do.
Where did Dave and Sarah?
We might have.
We did Dave and Sarah, you're right. So we have five down, four to go. Yeah. All right, so that was easy. Um. So our next uh appointments after, I'm gonna just write these down, so I'm getting it all correct. Okay, so um, the next one is we had uh Denise Klowd. Who is, would be representing as a community member. Um, Denise has been at almost all of our city council meetings. Um, since I've been here. Uh, it's a very commu- very committed um, to the community, long, long time. Long time member and um, she would fulfill one of the, she would fulfill one of the just community at large. Um, positions and um, are there any questions, I mean, about Denise? So, you know, I could show you the applications, but the applications don't really show much. I mean, it's basically, it's got their contact information. But any questions about Denise or her background or anything that anyone would have? Yes, Alderman Marano.
And not specific about Denise, but I kind of you mentioned that the applications don't really show much, but just for future reference, if we can add them prior to the meeting.
Yeah, sure. Um. So, you know. She has a customer service background. Uh, is is kind of her uh employment background. Uh, it it she. It it has a um. Associate's degree from from Harper College. She um. Longtime resident since twenty oh seven. Genuinely wanna see West Chicago be the best uh it can be. Um, these are not highly detailed. Uh, that that I mean, that is, that is everything that it says. Um, if we want our applications to be more detailed, we could certainly do that, but it's mostly just contact information. So, any other? Questions there? Let's take these one at a time. So I would entertain a motion to confirm Denise Klowd, A O L O D E. Okay, Alderman Alcantara Garcia, third second, Alderman Smith. Um, voice voter or call, voice vote? Voice vote? Okay, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Any abstain?
I'm second.
Okay. All right. Next, we had. That's six. What's up?
Radio ping?
Oh, no, sorry. Uh, so uh, we have three more, three more people to fill these positions. And I still don't have my piece of paper and my mind is having trouble right now. You don't have your notes either, yeah. Let me give me one second. Yeah, um, let's take, let's take a three minute recess. Three minute bathroom break and recess. My apologies, already here, okay? So, um, he was here earlier, but uh Greg Salzman would also be represented. And representing uh the citizen real at large. Um, Greg also, uh, it's a long time resident, at least twenty five years. He's uh.
Professor?
No, um, entrepreneurial background has uh started a couple, a couple of companies. Uh, and then sold them and then uh recently uh CEO of um, of a large corporation. Um, and uh, has a lot of both kind of entrepreneurial um. Expertise as well as tech background. Companies, he started at, uh, was a, was a, was a tech company, so. His kids have gone through our schools and been 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 here for about twenty five years. So he has a, just a a desire to see West Chicago becoming, become a thriving downtown. Any? Questions? Um, I can answer.
It's just, I I, you know, I know it says on the applications where they live, but in relation to where people live. Are we getting a broad like area of our whole city as far as where they're coming?
Yeah, I think so. Um, uh, uh, so Mr. Salzman would be ward one. Uh, Ms. Uh, Phelan is ward four.
Five.
Five, she's five.
Yeah, she's over in your new room, yeah.
Good, yeah. Um, uh, Mr. Sebastian is two. Uh, Mr. Myers is seven. Mr. BB is one. And two. So.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like it's all from the same.
Well, like, if it was all the city central or if it was, you know, also, I mean, we have those other neighborhoods that are way.
Yeah, yeah, and I think we do have, um, we do have uh a. Obviously, we only have three of these positions that are specifically like. You know, um, citizens at large. Um, uh, you know, we have, we have three, uh, two of them, which uh, the concept was to have. Uh, business, uh, business representation and then um, not for profit as well. Any questions there? Okay, um, do we have a motion? Yes.
To approve?
To approve Greg Salzman, S A L Z M A N. A second, Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, name? And the abstentions? Okay, thank you. Um. Okay, so um. Daniela uh Bañez. Do you wanna tell us anything about Ms. Bañez?
Well, I've known her family for years. Uh, they've been, should I use this thing or can?
Yeah, yeah, they're on mute, therefore.
I have known the Bañez for many years. Um, my, my father has known him. So they have been in West Chicago for a long time. I really believe uh. To be a, a good representative of West Chicago as well to this revitalized. And that, that's just someone who's Latino. And uh, with a background, family background for a long time. So.
Yes. Uh. Uh, Daniela is uh a nurse and uh she just has been hearing the conversations about revitalizing the downtown. And over the last several months, and has just gotten really excited to be involved in that process. Um, and so, um, yeah, she is asked to be on the commission as well. Any other questions? Okay, uh, I'd entertain a motion. Okay, Alderman Alcantara Garcia. Um, motion for Daniela Bañez, B A L L I N E S, and a second. Motion for Daniela Baeines, B A L L I N E S and a second from Alderman Switek. Daniela with two Ls. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Abstain.
Any opposed? And one abstention. Thank you. Okay. So. That's where I'm going to leave it for tonight with those seven because there's the, sorry, one, two, with those eight. Because there's. One person that I want to confirm with. And I'll tell you who it is. Omar Espinosa, who works at Republic Bank, yeah. So he's interested in being on it. And many of you probably know Omar, he's like. On tons of boards and like, you know, see him around all over the place. Very well connected, the only thing is we had a, we had a meeting, me and him and the owner of Republic Bank. And the owner of Republic Bank was also interested in being on it. And so I told them to kind of, you know. Fight it out between them and, and let us know which, which one would. Would like to be on it.
You know, would be a great addition.
Okay, so I'll hold off on that one though until, until we get a decision from them, okay? All right. Okay. I believe Ms. Chrissy is still here in the corner, do you want to come give us a speed explanation on the, the question about video gaming? Yes.
All right, good evening, so we have a business owner who had originally inquired in March of 2024. To open up a video gaming cafe to which he was explained that the regulations require a business to be. That only certain micro licenses were eligible and that it needed to be a restaurant, so it had to have a full kitchen. And that there would be a requirement to. Be open and operating for 12 months before video gaming could be applied for. So what I've laid out for you in the memo is the current regulations. The. Really, the, the history, as I understand it, and as I've found from documents in terms of how the video gaming regulations came to be. And then I've also summarized for you the liquor commission discussion where. The direction was to bring it back to the full city council. The reason it is here is because the business owner has identified that there have been some hardships. With regard to operating the restaurant business and has requested an amendment of some sort to the city code. To allow for a shortened time period for applying for video gaming. The business owner is here and I'm sure is happy to answer questions for you. But that really is kind of a quick synopsis, given the time of night.
Thank you. Alderman Demas or Alderman Stout, anything to add?
No, that was our discussion, it was primarily discussed that. But just, we discussed that. Originally that 12 month. Time period was. Somewhat in order to make sure that the business was going to be a. Solvent. Business. Prior to allowing for the gaming. So that they're not basing the business on the proceeds from the gaming. So. That's where we felt the full council. Input would be necessary because a lot of thought went into that timeframe of being a year and if we were to. Cut that back. You know, what do we cut it back to and what was the purpose then of? Having that put in place in the first place.
Okay, Alderman Demas, anything else?
The only other thing I would say is, you know. As we discussed it within the liquor commission. The owner did, did say that there was a hardship. And that was one of the reasons why he was wanting to add this sooner than with the year time lapse. However, as we discussed it within the commission. We didn't want to set a precedent for that to be. Something that would move forward with other businesses, and so I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, so just. I mean, to give you a little more specifics. The, the owner who is here. His wife had a stroke. Am I? Correct, his wife had a stroke earlier this year, has been a lot of difficulty and. I guess the one other. Angle that I would say is that. Though I am not in favor of video gaming in general. The, again, it's, you know, we're not making a decision about video gaming in general, that's already been made. And so here it's just a question of. Is there a reason to? To make an exception based on a hardship or to reduce? And this was kind of, I think, more. More where we were leaning that rather than just doing a one time. Exception, which would be difficult legally. Would there be? Would there be willingness to? To decrease the time period to say nine, nine months or something like that? I guess the, just to, to give it a fair. Argument, the, the other side is that when video gaming was allowed, it was allowed because of hardship. Because of COVID and that was, I wasn't part of this body, but as I, as I've been told, that was kind of the. Rationale behind it was, we want to help our local businesses and, and obviously. None of us want a local business to. To fail, to go out of business. And so. That's the, that's, that's the question, do you, do you have anything you'd like to say to? The group, thank you for being here and thank you for staying so late.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity, so my request is that I'm almost completed the nine months and three months are left. But according to the situation, I, according to my knowledge, I got the business license on September 17th, 2024. So the tenure already has been completed and the license is the liquor license E, I think so, so it's not like a cafes, a restaurant. More like a franchisee and I'm adding the gaming for the survival and you know how the economy is going right now with the recession. Everywhere, so that will be, and because of my hardship, I got my family member, my wife got a brain stroke. So it was like, like a trauma for me and I'm not able to look to my business the way I have to look at. And now I'm feeling to giving, like paying the payrolls and going with the hardship and paying the rent, so I need like your. Like. Hand for that, if you can allow that.
Yep. Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Alderman Morano and then we'll go to Alderman.
Good comment. Your food's great, big fan of your place, so, so sorry. It's sad here, that's, you know, you're in a hardship right now.
Alderman out?
Well, just like we said in the beginning, the number one. Source of your income is supposed to be. In a restaurant form. And previously others, when this all started, when. First time it came up, it got voted down, the second time it didn't, but. Almost everybody came out with the same thing that. This was a source of money for repairing the roofs, blah, 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 blah. It's hard to make a decision or something like this, knowing the condition of man that's going through. But how often can we keep changing rules and regulations based? Upon one situation?
Alderman Smith and then Switek.
I think if you're going to lessen the amount, I, I, I think the exception. Is probably not the right way to do it, if it's nine months and if you're going to make an exception, just make the rule nine months. Otherwise, yeah, we're, we're, we end up with a lot of exceptions, you know. There's one thing, then there's another thing and. It has to be uniform, in my opinion.
Alderman Switek.
I think it was discussed, thank you, I think it was discussed at the time that what were neighboring communities doing and what their. Requirements were for a business and I think ours were for pre-existing established businesses that had already been in business for well over a year. I'm not in favor of changing. If, if this something didn't come up and then we just looked at it, I said, why? Hardship? Maybe. I'm not, okay, I'm not in favor of. Changing the rules.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we've been allowing businesses, restaurants in specific to like. Open their gaming bar for like, or like. Space. Most of them because of like financial struggles. But like. How often? Or like, how many times are we going to like do these exceptions? And like, we like, we saw Alderman Smith said, like. We're going to keep doing this every time, like they have a financial struggle, I feel like to be fair to everybody, just like we can lower. The bar, or like everybody.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman South, yeah.
So to his point, the license has been obtained or has been retained for over a year now, so I think that. Factor goes out the window. The establishment hasn't been open for a year, but the license was issued for over a year.
So the way it's written. The, does anybody have the, the, the code handy? Chris, it's Chrissy, sorry, it's late.
I replied. So technically, the liquor license was issued first in this instance because there was a build out. So that did get issued September 14th or 17th of last year. But the business did not open until February 14th of 2025. Due to the build out, so there are two separate sections in our code that apply, one is the liquor license and that states that you have to have an, a liquor license issued. For 12 months and then the second part of the code is under the video gaming regulations and that stipulates that the business must be in operation. For 12 months, so both of those conditions must exist together in order for us to move forward with a video gaming application.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or? Yes.
Yeah, so another reason behind the, the 12 months that we put in there for the business to be in operation is that the, the idea behind the video gaming is that it's supplemental to their business, it's not their business, right? They're not in the gaming business. That they've got an established business that's in practice. Providing a service food, whatever it is that they, they do. And then, you know, over time after they establish themselves within the city, they wanted to add an additional service to gaming in this. Since then they could, but it was to kind of avoid someone coming in here just to get into the gaming business and that being their sole purpose of opening up that business.
All right, I think we're, we'll, we'll go ahead and vote. We, we motioned, right? This discussion, there's nothing to go around. Oh, thank you.
Kelly is ready to make an additional comment.
Okay.
We'd be looking for your directions as to how staff should proceed with this request, if at all.
Okay, so I think. It would be helpful to at least do a. An informal. Yeah, a thumbs up or thumbs down. So if you would be in. I think to make it specific, I don't, I didn't hear anyone arguing for like a singular exception, so I think the alternative would be. Reducing it to nine, a nine month requirement rather than 12. And so let's make that the, is that Alderman South and Demas, is that, is that kind of the? Alternative that we would be presenting?
Yes.
So. So let's make it, would you be in favor of reducing the? Liquor license, the requirement in the liquor license. For a gaming establishment to nine months in operation, give me a thumbs up or thumbs down. Just hold them up for a second, because I want to.
Clarify that.
Yeah.
Not the liquor license, the video gaming license to nine months.
The video gaming license, but it's the, it's the section which is in the. Is it in the video? Did I say that wrong?
Yes.
Both have to be reduced.
No, no, just, just the one. The one, the, the one in the, in the liquor license. They, they would already meet that, so it would be. If you are in favor of reducing the. The requirement in the gaming license section of the code to nine months in, in operation. Start of the year.
It's start of the year.
Instead, from 12 months down to nine. So. And everybody, okay. Sorry, keep them up for just a second.
If you're in favor.
If you're in favor of it.
I thought we were just kind of thumbs up versus any more. Holding the liquor license, what about being?
Okay, if you would not be in favor of that. Not be in favor of it.
Just slows that down.
That's a good.
Give me a thumbs down. And no abstentions though. Okay, so. I, I don't think it would be inappropriate being that this is a, an informal vote to check with Alderman Myers as well. But at this point, we had six noes and five yeses.
What about?
Fergus, Rich Ferguson.
And, and Alderman Sheehan as well, thank you. We, can I ask that you would get their direction as well?
I will happily reach out to each of them on an individual basis.
And if it is a clear direction, then I think you'll have your, your question answered, Ms. Chrissy and. If it's a split, then we'll. We'll have to come back and decide something. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Yes, once those results are tabulated, can you send that out?
Yes.
Yes, I will email, blind copy, so no one accidentally replies all.
Okay. Correspondence announcements, upcoming meetings, development, public affairs, you all can read that, December 13th and 20th. Mayor's comments, I've got about 14 points. I'm gonna mercifully cut this short and leave any comments to the next meeting. I, there's nobody left there, right? I mean. What? Staff, okay, I mean. Yes, you count, you are important staff, thank you, and you are important. I was particularly wondering about the, the two women that asked me a question. If they stuck around for three hours to hear the answer, I didn't want to leave them hanging, so.
The executive session on there was just if we needed to relate it to the litigation, related to the annexation.
I don't think we need to tonight. Second. She, she beat you to it, that's. That's his job, that's his job, okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Who was second?
He got in there, but, but Alderman Stout. Got in there before him to, to.
Now that you've kept the stuffers late, you're going to have a party at your house tonight.
All right, let's go. We'll watch the Cubs.